Good evening, everybody. And welcome to this evening's city council meeting. We will have a council meeting with the city of Orona. I'll ask everyone to stand as they're going to help sing the National Anthem.
(Singing) Oh, Canada, our home and native land. True patriot love in all our sons command. With glowing hearts we see the right, our true north, strong and free. From far and wide, oh, Canada, we stand on guard for thee. Etavale de flacheau peint, no têcher à no foi est c'est, no toi. Oh, Canada, we stand on guard for thee.[98.11][98.11](Applause)
Well, thank you very much, boys and girls, for joining us this evening. And your teacher and your supportive parents and others who helped bring you along. We really appreciate you coming and sharing your wonderful voices with us for the anthem. And for those in the audience and those in our viewing audience on Rogers Cable this evening, I want to remind everyone that if your school or community group is interested in coming to sing the National Anthem, we always welcome school groups and community groups to come in and sing it. And you can contact our office and register a week to come and do that. So again, thank you very much, and I don't blame you if you don't want to stay for the rest of the meeting. Have a great evening, everybody. It's been moved by councillor Davy that the minutes of the regular meeting held February 22, 2016, and special meetings held February 22 and March 7, as mailed to the mayor and councillors be accepted. All in favor? Opposed? That's carried. Are there any disclosures of pecuniary interest? There being none. Are there any communications referred to file? There are none. So we'll move on to a couple of presentations. And this evening, it's certainly my pleasure to be able to acknowledge two of our staff who have actually received certificates in their particular professional designations. So the first person I'd like to recognize is our manager of licensing, Tanya Daniels. And Tanya recently received her municipal law enforcement officer certified designation from the Municipal Law Enforcement Officers Association of Ontario. And so we wanted to take this opportunity to acknowledge Tanya and invite her forward as we present the certificate to her.[238.81][238.81](Applause) And then the second person we want to recognize this evening is someone who we regularly see in the council chamber, and that's one of our clerks. And Daphne Livingstone recently received her Certified Municipal Officer accreditation from the Association of Municipal Managers, Clerks, and Treasurers of Ontario. And she now officially gets to use the letters CMO, or Certified Municipal Officer, behind her name. Okay, well, move into delegations. And the first delegation is, excuse me, 6A. And is there anybody, any members of the public here to speak for or against the bylaw to name private roads in the residential development at 220 Apple Hill Crescent? Going once, is anybody here for 220 Apple Hill Crescent? Going twice? Going three times? Okay, that's fine. Mr. Clerk, should we, or Madam Clerk, should we deal with that item now or come back to do it right now? Okay, so 11F and under the bylaws, and 14F. In terms of reading, somebody want to move them? Moved by councillor Ionidis, second by councillor Singh. Any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? That is carried. And then the next one that we're just going to quickly deal with is Committee of the Whole, number two, the manufacturer's liquor sale license for Descendants Brewery. And they're just here to answer any questions, but this is fairly straightforward. So if not, somebody wants to move that? I didn't move it. Moved by councillor Fernandez, second by councillor Ionidis. Any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? That's carried. It's done. Thank you, sir. We'll now move on then to 6B, Ruth Cameron and the AIDS Committee of Cambridge-Kitchener, Waterloo and area. Welcome, Ruth.
Thank you, Mayor Benavich, and members of Kitchener City Council. I appreciate being able to come forward with my Tier Two grant appeal on this evening. I'd just like to tell you a little bit about AQUA as an introduction, and then quickly get into the details of our appeal. As I think many of you know, because you have supported us in the past, AQUA is the AIDS Committee of Cambridge-Kitchener, Waterloo and area. We're an AIDS service organization that provides prevention, education, advocacy, and support programs to the communities that are most impacted by HIV/AIDS in the entirety of Waterloo region. We focus on increasing inclusion and reducing stigma and discrimination, and we highlight something called GIPAMIPA, which is the greater and more meaningful inclusion of people living with HIV in all aspects of our work. We envision a future where there are zero new infections, and we also provide free evidence-based confidential prevention programs and HIV testing, which is supported in kind by Region of Waterloo Public Health to individuals in this community. And we've been doing this work in the region for 28 years. In participating in this appeal, we hope to address some common misperceptions of our work. At AQUA, we do not provide health care. None of the staff, including myself, are licensed health care providers. And in addition to that, health care is provided for the individuals that we support through Region of Waterloo Public Health, Arch HIV Clinic in Waterloo and Guelph, and local community health centers. We are also not licensed therapists. We do not do licensed therapeutic work. The largest focus of our work is bridge building, breaking down the barriers that are reinforced by the discomfort, stigma, and isolation that has been attached on a societal level to HIV. Doing this work enables individuals, who I've described before, to seek the health care and the social services that they need to remain healthy, to form social connections, and to do the education work that they do that prevents their peers from becoming new HIV infections. The City of Kitchener's strategic plan identifies quality of life, leadership and engagement, and diversity as community priorities. These are all things that align with AQUA's key principle of greater and more meaningful inclusion of people living with HIV in all aspects of our work. The benefits of this are wide-ranging and can be seen and evidenced at the global, regional, and individual level. When people are doing this work at the United Nations, UNAIDS says that the greatest barrier to getting to zero, the greatest barrier to getting people to get testing, is stigma. So that's what we focus on, reducing that stigma so people will find out whether they are HIV-positive or not. One thing that I think is very important with regards to this appeal is to know that what we were trying to focus on in our grant request was raising awareness and creating inclusion for the people in this community living with HIV, so that we can achieve those goals. That would be forwarded through our Department of Public Health and our Department of Social Services. Seventy-two percent of AQUA's clients reside in Kitchener. In our revised request, we've eliminated funds that were dedicated to increasing staffing, though the program material dollars remain. We've also requested in-kind grants for meeting space to host programming, our annual vigil, and our annual general meeting. This funding opportunity is crucial because we are not able to access increases in operational costs from any of our main funders. And the highly stigmatized nature of HIV limits our ability to fundraise in any significant manner. The receipt of these funds would allow us to continue doing our awareness raising, create inclusion for the residents that were mentioned above, and reduce risk for others in terms of becoming HIV-positive. It also allows us to attract a more diverse group of supporters. In our original request, we had requested $9,650. The breakdown of that, the largest portion was towards salary and benefits. $1,100 was towards program materials. And you can see, in addition to that, we had a small amount for travel, and that came to the total that we requested. In our new request, we are asking for in-kind grants to cover rental of the Victoria Park Pavilion in kind and meeting space at the Kitchener Downtown Community Center in kind, so that we can hold some of our programming in wheelchair-accessible space, which we currently don't have at our main site in Kitchener. In addition to that, the original $1,100 that was a cash grant is still in the request for program materials, so that we can continue doing that outreach work, for a total of Thank you very much.
Wonderful, perfect timing. We have a few questions for you. Councillor Fernandez.
Thanks, Ruth, for coming in, and I know there was a little bit of confusion around the other day, so I'm really glad that you are here. And I'd like that you clarified what your grant request is in lieu of what the original one was. So you provide support for citizens with AIDS across the entire region, correct?
Yes, so people who are HIV-positive.
HIV-positive, sorry, sorry. Have you been able to use the funds that you've gotten from us in the past as leverage to fund, to get funds from other levels of government or other municipalities?
What we have done in the past is mainly asked for in-kind requests. We haven't, in my recollection, and with the records that I have from the prior executive director, gone for an in-kind grant prior to 2014, when we originally did this request, and then again in 2015, when we did this request again. As for anything at the regional level, at the regional level, we have received $5,000 in the past to host the Region of Waterloo Public Health nurses who do the sexual health clinic at our site. And that is just to cover the cost of having staff hosting the clinic while they do the health care services there.
But you've not received any funding from City of Waterloo?
No, I haven't.
Okay. You identified that you were asking for two in-kind funds.
Yes.
And then you asked for an additional $1,100. Is that, is that correct?
Yes, and that's to go towards some outreach that we'd like to do with local service providers. Some of them are medical professionals, some of them provide social services in the community. Because of making that connection for people who might be at risk or not aware that they can get HIV/AIDS-specific services in the region, we need to make that connection so they can do those referrals to us.
Okay. Did you have a breakdown of what the in-kind amount was? I don't recollect hearing that specifically. Sorry.
So the request for the Victoria Park Pavilion is based on an in-kind grant that we received last year to do our HIV/AIDS vigil on World AIDS Day. And so that's where that dollar amount comes from. And the meeting space for the Kitchener Downtown Community Center in kind was based on information I received when I did a request to the department at the city to find out what the cost would be for holding two meetings per month for 15 individuals at the Kitchener Downtown Community Center in a room that they had available.
Did you say the total amount of what that was? Dollars?
Yes, sorry, that's $1,836.
$1,800, okay. And you were only recommended to get $100 of that?
And that was for a community barbecue.
Right, okay.
Yes.
Okay. If there's no other questions at the appropriate time, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to move that they receive... Just one more question, Ruth.
Yes.
If you were to receive, even, if we were to round up this amount to $2,000, and I realize that doesn't even touch the $1,100 that you were asking for, for your materials, would that, would that help you substantially?
Um, yes, it would. Small amounts of money cannot really help us increase our reach in terms of making people aware that we are available to provide services to these communities.
And my hope would be by us giving you a little bit more, that the City of Waterloo would step up as well and maybe at least match that. So that would be my recommendation, notwithstanding the fact that I realize that we would be over budget on this item, but we discussed that previous at the committee, so that would be my request to put forward for this.
Okay. I'll come back to you then, councillor Fernandez. Councillor Galloway-Seelock.
Yeah, I think most of my questions have been answered. I see here, though, in the, so I'm just gonna make sure I'm clear on a couple. I see here in the package that we received that you haven't received grant requests from us in 2015. Is that correct?
In 2015, what was received was an in-kind request to use the Victoria Park Pavilion for our World AIDS Day vigil.
I guess I look to see if staff can answer that after the delegation is done, because according to the notes I have, it doesn't jive with that. And I'm not saying that you didn't, I'm just saying, according to the committee notes that we have. So there was also an additional $100 for the barbecue permit fee. Is that rolled into the request that you've made for $3,427?
No, it isn't. As far as I understand, in the letter of instruction that I received a few months prior to this, that grant was already agreed upon, that we would receive that in kind for 2016.
That would have to be a council decision still, and we haven't dealt with that yet?
Okay, so it was my understanding that it happened, but I...
Yeah, well, because I don't think we approved it through committee, so it would be that additional $100. I just wanted to be clear. Those were my questions. Mr. Mayor, I'd be prepared to, I know councillor Fernandez is wishing to put forward a motion, but I'm prepared to amend that motion and give the full ask of this organization for $3,427.43, plus the additional $100 for the park permit fee, to make sure that that gets included in the recommendation. I think one of the pieces that's really important to me is the fact that they need our downtown community center in order to have a wheelchair-accessible location for all participants to be able to participate. So I think it's important that we support this organization with the amount that they've requested. They significantly reduced their ask since their initial request, so I would put that forward.
Okay, I'll come to you for the amendment. Councillor Marsh.
Thank you, thank you, Ruth. Just a question about, now that the request has been reduced and the amount that you were hoping for, for salaries is no longer in the picture, do you have other viable sources to make sure that you're able to maintain your staff?
Yes, we do receive operational funds, both at the provincial and the federal level. Those haven't increased in five years, but they are steady and stable. What we were really hoping to do was increase one part-time individual by an additional day, so that they could provide some services at the Kitchener Downtown Community Center in that wheelchair-accessible location.
Okay, okay, thank you. I'm prepared to support the motion when it's on the table.
Okay. Councillor Fernandez.
So I think that I'd like to see where councillor Galloway-Seelock's motion goes, and if it, if it doesn't pass council, then I'll definitely bring mine forward again.
Okay, so you don't want to do your...
I won't do mine first, councillor Galloway-Seelock.
Councillor Galloway-Seelock, then. Click in, thank you.
I didn't write it out. I didn't write it out, because it's simply the request that's on page 6B-2 in our council package. On the yellow sheets, there's an ask there for $3,427.43, plus the additional $100 in kind for the park permit. Barbecue fee, in-kind grant to cover off the park permit fee. So that would be my motion to move that forward.
Okay, is there a seconder? Seconded by councillor Gazola. Any discussion? Councillor Fernandez.
Oh, sorry, that was my...
Oh, okay. Any discussion?
Recorded vote.
All those in favor? Opposed? That's carried. Okay, you've gotten your grant.
Thank you very much.
No problem, thank you. Well, now, 6C, I've been told Mr. Frer has withdrawn being a delegation tonight. Just double-checking that, he's not here? No, okay. We'll move on then to 6D. And the following delegations have registered regarding the application of 42 West Acres. As council will recall, committee directed that some investigation happened between committee and council, and that information has been shared. We have a number of, we have two delegations on the agenda, and then two additional delegations, Ms. Sharon Harding and a Mr. Kurt Schneider. I do want to remind delegations that you have five minutes to make your presentation. And then, for those who are coming back and appeared at committee, if your focus of your comments today can be on new information. And with that, probably, usually we start with the applicant, I think. So we'll start with Mr. Chauvin.
Evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council. My name is Pierre Chauvin with MHBC Planning here, on behalf of the applicant here on Creek Developments. With me today again is Mr. Carlos De Silva and Eric Martins from Huron Creek Developments. At the last committee meeting, the resolution was to go back and review information and provide more information regarding possible access to Huron Road. Since that meeting, we have worked diligently with your planning staff and regional engineering staff to look at that option, which entailed some quick engineering design from our end. And we've obviously looked at all the various aspects. You have a submission from your planning staff, you have my submission in your package. I don't plan to reiterate what's in those submissions, but it's, suffice it to say that city staff, including regional staff, continue to not support an access to Highland Road. And I know we, I often, we don't always see eye to eye with the planning staff on some issues, but this is one of those occasions where we actually do agree on a similar position. And we certainly support staff's position in this regard. I think fundamentally, Highland Road access is not safe, given the speeds and the existing configuration of the road, site visibility, et cetera. And also, more importantly, it does not meet your own city emergency services policy, which provides for a maximum of 8% grade for access lanes. And we're providing an access to Highland Road that created 12% grade. So those fundamental issues, you know, to me are pretty important. And I think ultimately, and for all the reasons I noted in my submission, this proposed development is not only consistent with provincial policy, but regional and local policy, which among a number of other matters fundamentally promotes cost-effective development, which is what our proposed design will do, promotes avoiding public safety concerns, and also promotes the efficient use of land and existing services, which is what our existing original design contemplated. Now, planning committee suggested at that meeting that possibly that the matter be deferred to regional council, despite regional staff's position to not support an access. Personally, I would discourage that particular approach. I think that would just simply delay the inevitable, in my opinion. I think we would be right back here in a few months' time, and it would essentially just delay the planning approval process. So I'm here to ask tonight that, on behalf of our client, that we, I strongly urge council to make a decision, one way or another, with respect to the zone change application. So those are my submissions, Mr. Mayor, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Chauvin. We have some questions for you. Councillor Galloway-Seelock.
Yeah, thanks for coming in. I think you remember my question from committee, and I just wanted to know if there was any update or discussion around that with you and your group with regards to the reduction of the units from 27 to 24, so basically taking off one of the units in order to allow more buffers for the existing residents.
Through you, Mr. Mayor, we have discussed that, we have considered that, and frankly, this development has been reduced considerably from what was originally proposed. It's beginning to affect the viability of the project, and so we believe we have a sound proposal the way it is.
Okay, thanks for looking into that.
Councillor Fernandez.
Thanks. So your response to councillor Galloway-Seelock's question was that you had done a considerable reduction, but that you had, it would not be financially viable? Did I understand that correct?
That's correct, yes.
Okay. So if the residents were to sit down with you and your client and discuss with all of you, an opportunity to reduce the intensity of that development, so that it would be a compromise for everybody, would you be willing to do that?
Thank you.
I'm asking in a different way. I'm asking in a different way because he hasn't sat down with the residents yet.
Okay, I'll allow the question.
Well, through you, Mr. Mayor, I think you've heard my answer originally, in terms of the viability of the project. We'd be certainly happy to share the site plan with the residents, if that's so desired, and discuss the various aspects of the plan. At this point in time, I don't believe our client is willing to adjust a number of units as proposed.
Okay. You also mentioned that you were, there was a concern about the grade. Can you just, I apologize that I didn't hear the difference in the numbers that you had said, and I was looking at, I think it's an 8% grade from the region's policy. And you said the grade was 12%?
Yes, in fact, the region, there are two different policies here. The region has their own policy with respect to driveway ramps within their boulevards, and they set a maximum of 8% for a maximum length of three meters. We have, if you look at the plan that's provided in the staff report in your package, there is a 6% grade from the road to the property line, but then it goes to 12% internal to the site. And your own city's emergency services policy establishes a maximum grade, this is for emergency service vehicles, of 8%. And we're exceeding that by 4%.
So these townhouses will essentially be on the level part of that property, quite significantly higher than the buildings that are on either side of that. Is that correct? Because you're saying that there's too much of a grade, so you wouldn't be digging out the land to bring the grade lower on the entrance ramp?
If you're, sorry, through you, Mr. Mayor, you're referring to, just to clarify, digging out the access on Highland Road? Is that what you're asking?
No, I apologize. If I'm talking about from West Acres, it's level there, right, with the buildings that are existing. You're not talking about reducing that grade at all, so that the height of the buildings would be lower than what they would be if they were built at grade? Because there's a difference in height, depending on what point the measurement is taken from, whether it's taken from the lowest point of grade or the highest point of grade.
Through you, Mr. Mayor, I think if I understand the question... Through you, Mr. Mayor, I think if I understand the question correctly, the buildings themselves on what I'll call the West Acres side will be at grade and then it drops off towards Highland Road, much like it is along the rest of Highland Road as you see along the way. All the homes, some of which appear to be single story, but they're backsplits and you look from Highland Road, they look like two stories because it drops off towards Highland Road. This would be no different. Now, if we change the grades to accommodate this access to Highland Road and provide a second emergency access to West Acres, as was suggested by committee to look at, it also would further reduce the elevation of the internal laneway. But ultimately, those dwellings there, that'll be the elevation that we'll be working towards off of West Acres and then dropping off towards Highland Road.
Okay, thank you.
I hope that answers it.
Yep, thank you.
Councillor Janetzky.
Thank you for coming in, Mr. Chauvin. A couple of questions in regard to comments that were raised and that you mentioned. We have a proposal for twenty-seven units and you said they have been reduced from initially. What was the initial number that you had?
Trying to recall, forty, forty-two? I think we had forty-two units.
Forty-two?
Yeah.
And they were, like you've got nine units of which they're three stories stacked in this proposal, so what would that previous one been like, five stories high?
I think the height was still the same, but they're just more dense.
More dense?
Yeah.
So how many square feet per unit do you have in these proposals? Are these are all like three bedrooms, I'm assuming?
I'll have to defer to my client. Thousand square feet, two to three bedrooms.
I'm sorry, how much?
A thousand square feet.
And how many bedrooms?
Two to three bedrooms.
Depending on the layout and all that sort of stuff, right? And that's per unit. I understand you had also discussions with one of the agencies here in town about having the lower level units, having direct access right at grade level. Are you amenable to that?
Yes, well, and through you, Mr. Mayor, in fact, that was an initiative on the part of our client to ensure that these, those ground floor units will be compliant with visible housing criteria, which ensures that it's fully accessible, internal design configurations that ensures that it is accessible to people with mobility issues.
Right, okay, which is, which is good, nice approach to that. The other question I have pertains to slope and I know the regional has their standards and city has their standards. Internally, there's a section there that would be even at an extreme of twelve percent, which is greater than the Cedar Hill, the road on Cedar Hill at the top by Church Street. And that's quite significant and I know that's always been an issue with staff in terms of maintenance, snow, ice and all that. This would also be an internal thing, that also would be of a concern, that would be hard to maintain. Is that the way you would see it or not?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, I would agree. And in fact, that's part of my, the safety concerns that in fact, yes, during those winter months, that it becomes a difficult grade to maintain. And for vehicles stopping at that Highland Road intersection would be very difficult under icy conditions.
Right. And there's no sidewalk on Highland Road at this point in time. Would you guys be putting in a sidewalk as well as part of this development?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, no, we would not. That's part of, would be part of the planned reconstruction of Highland Road, just scheduled for 2018, I believe.
Yeah, because they'll go from two lanes to four with full municipal services, so. Okay, thank you very much.
Okay, that appears to be all the questions for you, Mr. Chauvin.
Thank you.
Thank you. Our next delegation is Ms. Jen Dolle. Hope I pronounced that correctly?
Dolle.
Dolle, okay, sorry about that. Welcome, Ms. Dolle.
Thank you. Mayor Van Branovic, councillor staff and community members, I appreciate the opportunity to speak with you this evening. Since speaking at the Planning and Strategic Initiatives Committee meeting on March seventh, I've met with senior planner Scott Patterson of La Bresch Patterson and Associates. Scott was already scheduled to speak at another meeting this evening, but we did discuss this application and had some additional concerns to share. I've sent these concerns to Mr. Andrew Pennell, who was able to answer some of them, which I appreciate, but we'll still go over our main concerns this evening, which is the entrance being on West Acres Crescent instead of Highland Road where the driveway currently is. One of the main issues stated at the last meeting was the issue of the fire truck being able to turn around on the property. In speaking with the planner, this should be irrelevant as according to policy, the fire truck should be able to just park on Highland Road, which is a fifteen minute limit from property line to principal entrance. If one of the buildings is just slightly over that fifteen meter limit, would it be possible to move that one building forward to accommodate this? Beyond that, I have currently read the new staff report that I received today, CSD-16-020, review of Highland Road access option. So the report does state that it may be possible to redesign the proposal by relocating both the regular and emergency access to the far west end of the site where grades are less steep. I believe that the main argument against this is that there is concern with cost and that this could lead to an OMB appeal by the applicant that is not defensible. I don't believe that these are good enough reasons to stop looking at a possible Highland Road access as we have strong neighborhood opposition to this application with, I believe, sixty-one people signing the initial petition. And if this did go through, we would file our own OMB appeal as well. So that's all I have for this evening, but thank you for your time and I'll try and answer any questions if you have them.
Councillor Fernandez.
Hi, Jen, thanks for coming in. You said that you had spoken to Scott Patterson?
Yes.
And you did that independently of, okay. Did he have any suggestions as to, from his planning perspective, what could be changed or what could be viable to change on this site?
Well, definitely the fire truck turnaround, that seemed to be a main concern from the last meeting and it doesn't look like it should be. I know we're looking at mainly grading right now, but if the fire truck turnaround is still an issue, then basically that fifteen meter limit should be fine. They would be able to park on the road and as long as the hose length reached, that's typically what they would do anyway for these types of buildings. So, and if there is one building that's just slightly under that fifteen meter limit, there's a possibility that they may be able to move that forward.
Okay. And have you had any communication with the planner for the developer?
I've been speaking with Mr. Andrew Pennell.
Oh, just with our, with our staff?
Yeah.
Okay, all right, good. Would you, I mean, I asked the question of the, of Mr. Chauvin, if your group would be interested in meeting with the developer and their consultant to see if they would be interested in reducing the density. Would your group be interested in having those discussions?
We would definitely be interested in those discussions to do with the entrance, the density and different details like that, yes. There are more details around fencing, trees, noise and things like that that I was discussing with Mr. Andrew Pennell. So when we get to a further stage, if it gets to that point, then we would definitely like to sit down and discuss that.
Okay, that's great, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Councillor Anadis.
Thank you, Mayor Verbanovic. Thanks, Jen, for coming in. I'm wondering if we could have the fire chief give his opinion on Jen's concerns about the height and all that stuff with the fire access.
Okay, maybe if you have any questions of delegation and then we can do questions of staff?
Okay, that's fine.
You don't have any other questions? Just staff? Okay. Are you going to have a follow-up for Jen if, depending on the fire chief's answer? Okay. Okay, Councillor Janetzky then.
Thank you for coming in and your comments and presentation. Were you doing them on just, on behalf of yourself as a property owner there or are you representing a number of residents?
We do have a neighborhood committee formed that I'm involved with, so there's a few of us that reach out to our neighbors on a regular basis and update them. We've read all the statements from the neighbors that are included in the report, so we know the main concerns are the entrance and the density and things like that. So I went on my own accord to speak with this planner, but I believe I'm, and we're all speaking on behalf of all of our neighbors.
So how many of your neighbors are here? If they show up their hands. There's four or five, okay. When I looked at the staff report and saw all the letters and the petition that have come in, there was a large substantial number. And now I hardly see anybody here. What has happened? Have they sort of agreed to what, has been compromised or coming to a compromise or, help me out, understand what's, there's only just five of you.
Yeah, and there were others that wanted to be here today but had other commitments and some others that I've spoken to. It seems like since the neighborhood meeting, a lot of people have lost hope that we have any say in this. When we did attend the neighborhood meeting, it seemed like it was just kind of going to be pushed through. And since that neighborhood meeting, three houses have gone up for sale right next to the development and the neighbors I've spoken to, they really are still opposed to this, but they just feel that they're not going to be heard, so they're not attending any further meetings.
So you're opposed to the total, you're really opposed to the total development, is that correct?
The total development, but the main concern is that entrance onto West Acres as opposed to Highland, because I think if that entrance was on Highland, then people's concerns about parking on the street, traffic, noise and things like that would be taken care of.
Now, I've been to the site over the weekend to take a look at it and I'm familiar with the property and there was an old single family house on there that has been there for many, many years. What would you have liked to see developed on that to replace the single family ultimately that you think would have been best?
Ultimately, I think it's mainly the entrance towards Highland and the density. So if maybe it was something that was more compatible with the neighborhood, like single level attached bungalows or something like that, that you see across the road from Max Convenience, they have that type of development, I think that would have been a better fit.
So how many units would you have liked initially?
I don't have a number, but definitely less than twenty-seven. As stated in the previous meeting, I believe there's forty-two houses on the entire street of West Acres Crescent. So to put twenty-seven units on one property is a significant increase.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Councillor Silak.
All right. Thank you.
Yes, if Chief Rehill could just give some comments as to some of the residents' concerns or at least answer her questions.
I need more time to consult with my partners in the planning department. I wasn't at the site planning meeting, so I can't really comment on this property at this time.
Okay, is that it, Councillor Anadis?
I have other questions to staff, is this?
No, we have more delegation, so let's, we'll come back then to the rest of the questions of staff. Ms. Sharon Harding, please. Welcome, Ms. Harding.
Good evening, mayor and city councillors. I have been a resident of West Acres Crescent since May of nineteen eighty-seven when I purchased my property there when we were R4 Kitchener. So talking about history of the city and that area, I'm the one you speak to. Currently, there are nine entrances on Highland between West Heights and Iver Needles where the roundabout is. Before that, there were four. This stretch has a seventy, has a speed limit of seventy kilometers an hour. There are no sidewalks and there are school bus stops. That is to the other side of the lights that we are now speaking of. Along the stretch between West Heights and West Heights, there were always two bus stops for over fifteen to twenty years and they were recently replaced when the I Express went in. And those bus stops are now at the lights, which is just steps from the, from the site that we are speaking of. The entrance that is planned for forty-two West Acres is the new entrance that they're talking about. There is a current entrance that has been there forever since it was farmland, since I moved there when we were R4 Kitchener. The location of the entrance on Highland was expanded in the nineteen eighties and the property owners were heard at that time and it was chosen to not have that become the main street of West Heights and West Heights was moved to its current location so that we could still have our quiet street of West Acres. As well, when the city changed West Acres to a Crescent so that there was no access to Highland, the property now known as forty-two West Acres was not given access to West Acres. The access continues to be off of Highland Road. The only reason it was given a West Acres address was for postal services. The homeowners had park garbage pickup in their driveways off of Highland, roadside mail delivery until the super boxes were installed, and there was not an issue with emergency services, garbage trucks and snowplows. The slope where the current existing entrance is, is a much lower grade than what they are proposing now. What they are proposing is to put the driveway at the other end of the property, which is a much higher grade. They also made comment in the report about sliding down the twelve percent grade and sliding across a sidewalk and there is no sidewalk. The sidewalks where our children walk are on West Acres Crescent and that's where they're proposing to have the driveway come through with fifty-plus cars per day. The landowners referred to the townhouses as well on the corner of West Heights and Highland as being similar and those are the ones that Jen spoke to as well. They're not similar. The ones across the street are ten townhomes, two rows of five each, single car garages and their own driveways, and they are all bungalows. The entrance is off a four-lane section of West Heights directly across from the gas bar at Max and M&amp;M's in New Orleans Pizza with only one property depth length from the corner of West Heights and Highland. What we are looking at in increasing our traffic is turning onto West Acres off of West Heights by Highland. We again, on the, I guess you would call it the south side, we have one property length between Highland and West Acres. And even today, you know, coming in with the, the way the lanes are situated, and I know councillor Anadis has mentioned that that may be changed. It was recently changed to allow for bike paths and now it may be changed back to the four lanes, who knows about that, how that's going to be. But currently, even turning off there now with the traffic today, when you turn off, I come off right and then turn left onto West Acres, it is dangerous. Add another fifty cars turning during rush hour, it's going to be extremely dangerous, not only for the drivers, but for the people that are walking and crossing on West Acres and Highland. What I am asking is for the safety of our neighborhood and our community. I have lived there, I said since nineteen eighty-seven, I've raised my children there and my grandson is there now as well. And I just ask that you take some time to reconsider this application and respect our community.
Okay, we have some questions for you, thank you very much. Councillor Fernandez.
Thanks, Sharon, right?
Yes.
Yes. Might I understand you correctly, and have you seen this map?
Uh huh.
Okay. So if I'm looking at this map where the driveway is located on this map, so that would be my right, your left, you're saying that the grade on the other side is less?
Where the current driveway is.
Where the current driveway is.
Where the current access is off of Highland is less of a grade than where they are proposing to put the new one if we were having an entrance off of Highland.
Thank you.
And I understand you're not an engineer and neither am I, but could you give me some sense of how less of a grade it is?
Half.
Okay, okay. And do you think that if that entrance was originated off of Highland at that location, that that would be more acceptable to your community if the density was to stay the same?
I still prefer not to have the density. When you take the numbers, I mean, that's over an additional hundred people moving into
Absolutely.
To the Crescent.
Yeah. But I'm just sort of throwing this out as a, as an option or a compromise possibility is if the driveway was to be moved, that that would, would that help alleviate some of the concerns?
We're still looking to not have the access on West Acres.
Exactly, so not having the access on West Acres, but if the driveway was moved to the other side of the property from on Highland and because it's less of a grade, if that was able to be a possible option, would that help alleviate some of the concerns that the residents have?
Possibly.
Not given the density. I understand the density is a big issue and it is for me as well, but I just wanted to see if that compromise would be a viable help.
Possibly, yes.
Okay, well, I have some questions of staff then. Thank you very much, Sharon.
Thank you.
Those are all the questions we have for you, Ms. Harding. Thank you for coming in. Mr. Kurt Schneider.
in. Mr. Kurt Schneider. Welcome, Mr. Schneider.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and City Councilors. I just wanted to state that we have one opportunity here regarding this property at 42 West Acres to get it right. Once the property is developed, it's going to be permanent, and it's, I think it's really important that it be done properly to begin with. And it's my understanding that the City of Kitchener Planning Department is currently working on a residential intensification policy for established neighborhoods. If I understand correctly, that's not fully in place, but I think the property that we're discussing in our neighborhood is an ideal candidate for a policy like this. If we don't have firm guidelines in place right now, I think it's unfair for the planning staff to ask the city councilors to give approval to a project being, going forward, until those guidelines have been firmly put in place. I wouldn't like to think that in the future, we would look back at this development and say, "It was done wrong, and it should have been done, it could have been done better." Really, that's all I have to say. I'm not in opposition to the property being developed. I think that it's unfair for us to say that that shouldn't happen. I'd rather see properties being developed within city limits rather than us spreading out the city in degree, into farmland. But I just really hope that we can do this correctly in the first time. Thanks.
Mr. Schneider, we do have questions for you from several councilors. Counselor Fernandez?
Thanks, Mr. Schneider, for coming in over here. So you're admitting that you accept that there could be development on this site?
Certainly.
Is there a density that you would find acceptable to your neighborhood that would fit in on that site?
To be honest with you, my main concern is the access being onto West Acres Crescent rather than Highland Road. I know that the current driveway for that property, and this was a residence, and up until very recently, there was a family living on that, in that house, on that property. So it's been a long-time residence. The driveway was always onto Highland Road, and, you know, it was a single-family living there in a single-family home. So it wasn't, it didn't, it always struck me as odd that the address was 42 West Acres, when really, there was no access onto West Acres from that property. So I'd like to, I'm not in objection to the property being developed, and I think the majority of my concerns would be alleviated if the access to the property remained Highland Road.
Okay, thank you.
Hold on, sir, there's still more questions. Counselor Marsh?
Hello, thank you for coming in. So you mentioned that you'd like to see development done right. And so I was just curious if you could expand on, what do you mean? Like, do you mean access on Highland, even though we've got this report?
I think that's part of it. I think that what I'm seeing is that the main opposition from here on Creek Developments to making the access onto Highland Road is, seems to be cost. I know they've mentioned grade, and I understand that. I think that if there was a way to make it possible, that that would be the way to do it. And I think when I speak to my neighbors, the biggest concern that we all seem to have is the volume of increased traffic that 27 units is going to bring to our, what is a quiet Crescent.
So just to ask you, did you have a chance to review the report that staff came forward with most recently?
Yes.
Yeah. So it's not just the, you realize then that it's not just the developers' objection, it's also staff recommendation?
Yes. I agree. I did note that, and that's why I think I was hoping that with a residential intensification for established neighborhoods policy, that we could maybe, you know, if there was a policy in place like that, I understand it's being worked on, but if there was an established policy, then we could refer to that for this type of a development.
I hear you. Okay, thank you.
Okay, so, no, not yet.
Sorry.
One more question. Counselor Yonetski?
I was making some notes, and it wasn't quite fully giving you the full attention at the beginning of your speech. And you mentioned something about having a policy that would be in place. And just, could you repeat that for me, so I can understand?
I don't have all the information, but it is my understanding that the City of Kitchener planning staff is currently working on a policy for what they call R.I.E.N., for residential intensification for established neighborhoods. So I think without that policy being in place yet, I think it's unfair for the planning staff to ask council to go ahead and approve the site plan when there, it seems to be something that they're, something that would directly address the concerns for infilling this property in an established neighborhood.
Okay. And I appreciate where you're coming from, but the city does have policies within the official plan for intensification throughout the whole city, so that would comply. If you look at the report and look at the staff's comments in terms of compliance with the long-range growth, the official plan, regional official plans, et cetera, that shows that it does conform, this development does conform to it. Your concern about access to Highland Road, when this was a single-family development, access is permitted because it's been there since day one, whenever that house was built back in the 20s, 30s, or 40s, whenever. And then when development of the subdivision, Forest Heights took place, that remained, you cannot deny access to their existing road based on policy and rules. So that's why nothing got developed with access to West Acres. Eventually, it would be eliminated, because that's the policy throughout the whole city, that any lots that are fronting on, like a scenario like this, that never got developed. And there's two or three others further up on Highland Road as you're going towards Ira Needles that have frontages, have been old homes. They'll probably get eventually their access is denied as well as they get redeveloped one way or the other. So that is an unfortunate situation, but that's just the policy of the city and the region. And so that's why that access still has remained. But now that there's redevelopment, then they try to bring it up to date to current standards in terms of access from local streets versus backlotted.
Counselor Yonetski, where's the question in there?
Not really, but I was trying to help him out with an answer, so he was wondering why there was, an access was not being permitted, but that's the rationale.
You can have staff.
Because nobody else has provided an answer.
Okay. We can have staff do that, but thank you. There aren't any more questions. And sir, I will just let you know that on the residential infill guidelines that you reference, that's a piece of work that is being done right now, but it's about a year from being completed. And in the meantime, we're obligated to process applications by law.
I have no problem waiting here.
No, no, but I'm saying, we're obligated, I hear that, but we're obligated by law to process applications. I'm not even sure if this area is covered. Mr. May, you want to...
Through you, Mr. Chair. I'm almost certain that this area would not be covered in the study area that council defined for the infill policy.
Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you, sir. Okay, so that would be all the delegations that we have right now, so we'll move into questions of staff. Counselor Iannidis?
Thank you, Mayor Bandwick. I want to ask the chief again the same question, because I think he got an update through his staff, so I'm wondering if he could update us.
Chief Rehill?
Yeah, through the mayor, this is really my own viewpoint. Operationally, for aerial apparatuses to perform a second-story rescue, we need to be closer to the unit. Secondly, for aerials to flow water above the units, we can't be spatially removed from the complex. So those are two factors with regards to placement of vehicles that we have to consider.
Okay. Sorry, so by that, you're saying you need to be able to put the truck near the buildings, correct?
Through the mayor, we need to be ideally closer to the building, the better. We can't be 500 meters away to perform a rescue off an aerial apparatus. So these are considerations that we need to think about.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, my other question is to planning staff, DeAndrew, and it's more but less about the OMB appeal. So if we were to not approve this, we would be looking at fighting two, basically fighting against two planning opinions, so one from the region and one from ourselves, basically.
Oh, hang on. My mouse is stuck.
Mr. Clerk, can you click on it? Because... Okay, you're on now, chief. Or, sorry, Mr. Pennell? Oh, not yet. There we go.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. If the application is denied by city council, the applicant would have the opportunity to appeal to the Ontario Municipal Board. And staff's recommendation, as outlined in the report to the Planning and Strategic Initiatives Committee, did recommend approval of the report. So in a sense, yes, staff would be not on the same wavelength as council on this matter, and the region as well.
Okay. My other question is relating to one of the delegation's questions was our Counselor Fernandez's direction. And that's basically kind of maybe moving the, flipping the whole property around and having access on Highland Road where the existing driveway. Is that even, is that doable?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. The, this, to flip the driveway to the other side of the property, hasn't been reviewed in detail. However, I do note that if you, if the driveway was to be switched, it would likely create additional issues, because currently, the buildings are closest to a side lot line, and next to that side lot line is a single-detached house with a detached, or an attached garage. To flip the driveway to the other side, you would be moving the buildings closer to the rear yard of several single-detached houses, which may have an impact on rear yard amenity spaces. So by creating, by creating a solution to one problem, you create additional other problems which have not been reviewed. And you'd basically be starting from scratch with the application. So again, the applicant would have the opportunity to appeal that.
Okay, you're not helping me here. So there is no possibility of being able to change the slope from the existing grade to Highland Road? Because right now, we're saying it's, it would be a 12% slope. There is, that's definitive?
Through you, Mr. Chair. We have reviewed this particular issue of the slope in significant detail. We have given it a fair trial. We have given it a fair consideration, thorough consideration, and we do not believe that it's viable to locate the driveway off of Highland Road and have it be safe.
Okay. I may have some comments, I may have some questions afterwards, but my time's up.
Okay, thank you. We'll have to, we're having some technical difficulties, so thank you, everyone, for your patience. We're going to have to work collaboratively with the clerk, because the mouse appears to not be working. So we can turn Counselor Fernandez on next, please.
Thanks. So I was trying to listen to what Counselor Iannidis was asking Mr. Pennell here, because I really think that there's, there is always an opportunity for us to revisit something before we've put an absolute stamp of approval on it. With the new information that the grade at the opposite end of this property, closer to West Heights and Highland Corner, is less grade, and I've seen it done, it's happened in my ward, we've worked together, and I know I'm trying to build up to a question, because that's what I'm supposed to be doing here, is working with the developer, working with the community, and working with the planner, would you say in your expert opinion, Mr. Pennell, that there could be an opportunity to revisit how this site looks right now, if everybody was open to that opportunity?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. There is always an opportunity to review other options. I think that we've reviewed the option that we've got on the table thoroughly, and this would be another option, though. I am concerned that there would be many more issues opened through the, through the flipping the driveways, but it is always an option.
Okay, so it, from your expert opinion as a planner, a site developer, there is opportunity to make this change. It may reduce a unit or two, it may reduce that, and then maybe they'll have, they'll have to up their price, or, you know, I would leave that up to them and how they would decide to do that. But instead of going to an OMB and wasting an awful lot of everybody's time to work together, you see that that's an option?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. We have already discussed this particular issue with the applicant. They are not willing to, from my understanding, to move the access location. So as staff, we are willing to look at this. We do have concerns that flipping it will create additional issues. We are willing to look at it, but it's going to require the participation of other parties as well.
Okay. I have a question for Chief Rehill.
Okay, go ahead.
So, chief, your concern and your staff's concern was the 12% grade. Understanding that the grade on the opposite side of the property is 50%, roughly, 50% less, what grade would you be able to respond to this, maybe not? What grade is your equipment able to handle?
Hold on, hold on. Can you turn on Chief Rehill, please? Thank you.
Through the mayor, I don't have an answer at this time. I'll have to get back to you on that.
Okay. Well, I don't want to put another deferral on the table without speaking with the ward counselor, but I just feel that there's a little bit of new information here. I really would prefer to see the community, the developer, and our staff work together on an option. So is there, is there any other questions?
There are.
There are? Okay, then I will, I'd like to come back when those questions are completed.
Counselor Gazzola?
I would just like to go, it appears that there could be a compromise if we can change where the driveway is. I guess my question is, what kind of deferral would be required? I'd like to see if it's possible to try once more to see if we can't work around it. I think, I mean, going forward, this is an issue that's going to be coming to us on many occasions in the future. And I would like to, like to hope that we've done everything in our power to try and assist the neighborhoods. So it appears that there might be a compromise there. I guess my question is, how much, what do we have to defer this for, what period of time, to have another look?
Well, I think the earliest we could see this come back to us would be to special council on April the 11th? Hold on, sorry, the clerk, thank you, go ahead.
Now, how, if the developer, how does the developer feel about that?
Mr. Chauvin? What there, I guess the question for you is, is there a willingness to sort of, before council deals with this, give one final attempt to see the neighborhood work with your client on this issue?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. We have serious concerns with deferring this any longer. We've been at this for over a year or two now with the application. I know it's just fresh for some of these residents. We have looked at this extensively, and I have some serious concerns with an access that's being suggested here, because the grades, it's not very clear on the staff report that you have, because the elevations aren't showing up very clearly on your sketch there, but there is still a five-meter difference.
But there is still a five-meter difference between Highland Road, West Acres. And it doesn't take an engineer to figure out that that's a substantial grade to make up in a short period of time. You're still gonna have 12% grade. You're still gonna have grading issues. And I would submit severe grading issues in terms of engineering to make that work. Not to mention the monitoring wells, which are adjacent to this road, which will now get salt because we're gonna have to salt this 12% grade, which will have, I'm sure the region will have some concerns with this. So, I hear your concerns and your apprehension of thinking that we haven't considered all these options. We have considered these options. And frankly, to defer any longer just doesn't do any, won't resolve anything.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Gazola, you still have the floor. The clerk can just turn you back on. Hold on. There you go, go ahead.
No, I'm ready to make my comments. I would, I would have liked to have seen...
Well, hold on. We have to bring a motion to the floor. And I'll have to turn to the committee chair on that. Counselor Fernandez, you have more questions? Are these people lining up for comments? Okay. Counselor Singh. We can ask Counselor Singh to be brought on.
Thank you. And the motion has been moved by myself and Counselor Ionidas.
Okay, so you'll need another seconder?
It's just, my co-chair is Counselor Ionidas. That's why I just mentioned his name. But I can understand his difficulty with this issue. So, I'll say it's seconded by Counselor Davies. Provided he wants to take the motion.
It's only a procedural process. Okay, so it's been moved and seconded. Counselor Fernandez, you want to move a deferral? So, we'll come back to you and allow others to make their comments?
Absolutely.
Um, Counselor Ionidas. Does everyone's clear, though? Counselor Fernandez plans on moving a deferral. So, you can factor that into your comments.
I'm not gonna make too much into this. The way I look at it is, I think we need to look forward to some form of compromise. And I think, I think maybe a deferral would be appropriate in looking at the alternative option, even though if it's not, from the developer's perspective, there, I, I would like to see a little more definitive answer on how, what that would look like as, as far as the project would be. So, I'm supportive of, of a, of a deferral. And if, I don't, like, what was the deferral anyways that you would be looking at? Again?
April 11th is, is when we have committee. And so, we could bring it to special counsel that day.
Okay. That's, that's fine.
Okay. Counselor Gazola.
Yeah, I am, I would like to see this deferred. I can appreciate what the developer's done. I can appreciate the fact that they've started out with a lot more units and would like to get it down. And I, I appreciate all these issues. I too would appreciate, though, if I lived on the street where I live and there's a one vacant lot and somebody comes in and is gonna put in 25, 27 units, I, I would, I would really be concerned and upset about it. I can, I can appreciate that. So, in, in the, in the final analysis, it may be the way we have to go in order to, to abide by all our other policies and whatnot. But I'd like to just take one more final look till April 11th. What's today? The 21st of March. April 11th will be here before we can turn around. And so, I would, I will support a, a deferral if it comes to the table.
Okay. Counselor Janetski.
Mr. Chauvin was correct in terms of having concerns on access. If we take those buildings, both buildings, and shift them from the west side of the lot to the east side to try to create a access to Highland Road at where the existing access is. Now, you gotta keep in mind that the existing access comes in off of Highland and then it goes parallel to Highland, to the house, which is roughly where the, where the middle of the property is. So, that's what allows it for a slope to be somewhere between 4% to 6%, which is reasonable. If you're gonna make it as a straight line coming out parallel to the westerly property line and right now at the easterly property line with the grades that you have, you're gonna have a 12% slope. I'm of the opinion that on the west side, having worked with this property from previously, you're gonna have a higher slope, maybe 14%. You're not gonna be able to achieve it unless you go do a parallel thing to Highland Road. And that's another, that's another story which I don't think quite is gonna work out because you're gonna have access now at the back of the properties. In the meantime, the region, no matter what slope analysis you're gonna do, are still gonna fight against having any access to Highland Road. The region is just gonna say, period, no. That's it. No matter what type of compromise, no matter what type of meetings you're gonna have here, because I've dealt with the region, I know how they operate, and, and I know their scenario and their policies. And that's the way they're in. And staff can comment on my, on my comments to, to let you know as well. So, really, if you're gonna be looking at any compromise in terms of access to Highland Road, I think you're just wasting your time. If you're gonna do anything else in terms of maybe reduction of units, maybe you can go into furthers and discuss it further with the developer. On the other hand, you may refuse to do that and take it right to the board. And then, it's out of council's hands. You've got a predicament here. So, the way I see it right now, I can see the objective to try to work with the residents, but I think their back is against the wall. So, going for a deferral, I don't think is a wise decision, and I'm not prepared to support it.
Counselor Singh.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I kind of agree with Counselor Janetski's perspective on the predicament, predicament that we're in. I do sympathize with the ward councillor, Counselor Ionidas, in wanting to see some better compromise come out of this. And I also am reflective and conscious of the issues that the neighborhood has outlined as concerns of this intensification in an area that hasn't had this type of development take place. But we have to be cognizant and appreciative of our staff and their ability to properly advise us and their recommendation to be supportive of this application. And through conversation and questions, I think we, at length, we've asked, are there alternatives? And I think staff have outlined, there are very few. And the property owner and his representative has reiterated, there isn't much room for additional compromise. All we're doing at this point is delaying and in placing a sense of hope in the neighborhood. I wish that there was a way forward that would be satisfactory to all groups. Unfortunately, I think this is the best that we can have it at. Based on that, and not wanting to see this, this go forward into an OMB hearing where ultimately, the, the opinion will probably rest with what the application is being recommended as, and then, the city and the taxpayer having incurred substantial cost to go through that process. Because of that, I can't support the deferral.
Counselor, Counselor Marsh.
Thank you. I, I really do appreciate the idea that if this proposal were to go forward, that the main floor homes would be visitable. I think that's a great initiative. I also can appreciate that the number of, of units has been reduced. But 42 units on that property might have been a little bit wishful thinking in the first place. I, I'm going to support a deferral because what I would like to see is for the property owner and the, and their representative come to the table one more time with, with the community and to, to look for a compromise. One last comment that I, I fully appreciate all of the hard work that our staff have, have put in to make their recommendations and the, the design brief. I, I think it's, it's very commendable work. And yes, we do need to rely on the expertise of, of staff. But staff are going to be bound by the, the planning rules. Whereas, around our council horseshoe, we are, we are also considering additional aspects that go beyond the staff's jurisdiction. So, that is why I really think if we could have at least a little bit more of a compromise, that maybe nobody will be happy. But also, nobody will be completely devastated either.
Okay. Counselor Fernandez?
Thank you. So, looking at a deferral, the reason I'm looking at a deferral is because I think, as one of our delegations pointed out, the region themselves put bus stops on Highland Road. There are already nine entrances along part of that road where people are driving in and out. I'm not sure what the numbers or the volumes of traffic that are coming in and out on Highland Road. But that's a point that has to be considered. The new information about the fact that there, that the existing driveway is at a lower grade, I think is a really important point here. It is possible, yes, that the developer may lose a number of units. But isn't it better to be a good neighbor, to work with the community, and build something that you can be proud of, that the community will support, and that will not cost everybody extra money and extra time because you're gonna end up at the OMB? So, let's work together. I've seen it done. It happened in my ward, and it was a substantial change. I'm sure Mr. Siobhan, if he spoke to Mr. Britton, would be well aware of that amazing compromise that worked in favor of our community. So, this is a perfect opportunity to do that. We haven't got definitive answer from the chief yet. But I think that there must be a way to work on something that's going to fit in for the neighborhood, that's going to be maybe the first step towards our residential infill policy that we're going to be working at. Won't it be great for you guys to be the example that we're gonna hold up for future infill development? To say, look what was done, look how it worked, and look how the community and the developer and our staff worked together on this? So, I really implore the rest of council to do this, to work together on this, and to make this a successful project for everybody.
Okay. Before I go to your motion, Counselor Galloway Seelock.
I find this one a little difficult just from the perspective of there just may be another option. And I've been searching Google Maps, if you're wondering what I've been doing, just to try and get some more context around an alternative entrance on the other side. And I think it's worth a couple weeks to look at it. I know the applicant doesn't want to do that. But I think from a perspective of being able to make that final decision, I think it's important to take just that three-week timeframe to do so. But I do want to caution Counselor Fernandez in suggesting that the compromise that we came up with for a different development, we were dealing with a 12-story high-rise. It's a much different development and a much different change that happened with respect to that zone change that hasn't come forward to council yet. So, there has been agreements made, but it hasn't officially made it to the council table yet. I just think it's a completely different scenario. And so, I just, I, I think I understand your point that it can be done. I just think the, the, going from 12 stories down was just a different scenario, is all I'm saying. But I think it is a good point that there, there is the ability for residents to work with developers and come up with solutions. So, I do agree with that. So, with that, I think, I really am gonna support the, the, sorry, the deferral for three weeks because I want to make sure every rock is unturned to make sure it's all been looked at. And I appreciate everyone's input to this, this point and to this date from staff, from the consultant, from the property owner and the residents. But I think there's just one more option that has to be looked. And I don't think we have that information in front of us today to make that decision.
There aren't any other folks in the queue to make comments, so I'll just briefly make mine. I will support the, the deferral this evening, although I do so somewhat reluctantly because I'm not convinced that we're gonna come up with a solution. However, I am cognizant of the fact that there is a small, and I say this very honestly, a very small chance here that maybe a solution could be brought together. I know the, that's probably not the, the answer that the applicant wants to hear this evening. But at the same time, I think taking the time to see this happen by the next council meeting is certainly a lot less time and a lot less costly than a potential OMB if we can come up with a solution. However, I'm also not gonna be prepared to see this go on in, in perpetuity. And if a solution can't be reached, and, and again, I am hopeful, there are some, you know, there are some, there's a small window here. If a solution can't be reached, then on the 11th, I will expect us to make a decision because we owe that to the applicant, we owe that to the community. It has gone on for a long period of time, and we need to move on one way or the other. And take all of the information, all of the professional opinions, the concerns of the neighborhood and, and of the applicant, and ultimately make a decision on that day if we can't come up with a resolution. In the meantime, I guess I would urge everyone to, to try to come up with that resolution with, with some, some honest effort. Because if collectively you can do that, I think it'll certainly make everybody happier than seeing, seeing a situation that comes out of this council chamber that perhaps not everybody will be happy with. And I would suggest if it ends up going to the OMB, people would be even less happy with, based on past experience, when we have taken things to the, to the OMB. So, with that, I will take Counselor Fernandez's motion for deferral now. Okay. Recorded vote has been called. All those in favor? All those opposed? And that deferral is carried. This issue will come back on April the 11th to special counsel. Probably the best, I'm guessing, probably just before planning would probably be the best time to deal with this. So, check with the clerk. It'll likely be around somewhere between 6:00 and 7:00 on that, on that evening of the 11th that we'll be dealing with this. Okay. We'll now move on to item E, Les Holdway, developer, broker, and Noah's Ark Wetlands Foundation. Welcome, Mr. Holdway.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, counsel. I'll read as quickly as possible because this is six weeks' worth of material that I boiled down here. I'm gonna skip the middle section, and I hope you'll have a chance to read it later. Dear counsel, thank you for your opportunity to speak. My name's Les Holdway. I currently reside in Cambridge, Ontario. I've worked in construction restoration in Montreal, Toronto, Guelph, Fergus, Alora, Cambridge, and the K W region. I spent the early part of my career in Toronto in various media capacities, in documentary and feature films. Subsequently, I was an original partner in Vista Home. I transitioned that capability into historic restoration projects, including the redevelopment of the St. Andrew Street Mill condos in Fergus. I have a lot of experience with municipal water line replacement. However, it was both my construction experience and my earlier connection to documentaries and Michael Moore that led me to Flint, Michigan at his invite last month. I went there to get a firsthand understanding of the problem, meet with the protagonists and principals involved, and form my own opinions. I met with the mayor, Michael Moore, Jesse Jackson. We had an interesting discussion of what's going on. And I wanted to really get an idea for myself what the issues were. I've also worked with the Ministry of the Environment, which gave me an understanding of water issues. And I now also work with Noah's Ark Wetlands Foundation. What I discovered in Flint, although a much more extreme version of our situation, does have some parallels to industrial southern Ontario. One of the big issues for Mayor Karen Weaver and Towns Street, the US and Canada, is there's been no systematic inventory of where or how many lead water lines there are. First and foremost, the government and the experts in Michigan now publicly agree that there's no safe level of lead contamination in water, be it drinking or otherwise. Lead is drawn into the body and the bloodstream, both externally... be it drinking or otherwise. Lead is drawn into the body in the bloodstream, both externally and internally. The lead is almost entirely retained by the body and filters its way to the human brain, where a whole host of issues can result, including a significant and lifelong impairment of cognitive function. There's over 1,000 residents in Flint who are showing signs of impairment or other issues related to lead. The most worrisome aspect of this is there is no taste or media effect that atties the person's understanding of what's happening to them, and those children's developing brains are most susceptible. Compounding the problem, as Sanjay Gupta points out, is that children with poor nutrition absorb even more lead. So, us, in our region, there appears, number one, in our region there appears to be no mandatory requirement for contractors to report and document lead pipe as they may be connecting to when replacing other lines. Two, there is no comprehensive audit and inventory of all lead water supply lines, nor is there a funded program focusing on their immediate replacement. Three, there is no requirement for the city or the homeowner to replace individual supply lines to a home when they are discovered to be made of lead. Four, there's no requirement to attach these findings to the title of the home to alert buyers of the problem. A home inspector will attempt to verify the home itself has no lead pipe, but is no clear way to ascertain the type of line leading to the home. Five, even if the homeowner is made aware of the line when discovered, replacement is not mandatory. It costs $3,000 to $9,000 to replace a single service to a home. Most homeowners will just avoid the cost. Number six, the subsequent test by the city to see if these discovered lines exceeds 10 parts per billion only relates to the water flowing through the pipes. On that date, even at 10 parts, how much have you accumulated in a day, week, or year? And the test only relates to the lead in the water line, not accumulated in the person. In Flint now, if the discovery is over 10 parts, they do blood tests of all the individuals in the home. Number seven, in every case, the households exceeding lead levels, municipalities should be offering blood testing, as I just said. Flint now declares there is no safe level of lead. The 10 parts per billion needs to go as a threshold and be replaced by zero. As if they found in Flint, the acidity level of the water fluctuates from day to day in the 100 or so different wells and river sources in our region. The water on any given day can be many multiples of that number. In Flint, recent independent samples from individual homes have spikes in the lead content as high as 3,000 parts per billion. At that level, it's not even safe to shower in the water. Ten, to make an immediate and mandatory pri—sorry, I missed one. Nine, the only safe and effective response to lead is the removal of all lead water mains, all lead home and factory supply lines. Number 10, to make it an immediate and mandatory priority for each town in the region as a whole, the province, and across the country. Eleven, we need an immediate independent inventory and audit of all lead lines in the system. We need a mandatory disclosure policy for all contractors discovering lead pipe in the course of their work.
Mr. Holdway, I can ask you to start wrapping up?
I am. I'm just on the last number.
Okay, thank you.
Thirteen, we need the region to issue a policy advisory to all government personnel to disclose information relating to lead. Fourteen, we need to have all lead home supply connections be immediately identified on the title of each home. Fifteen, we need all home inspectors and real estate transactions to also identify and declare all lead supply lines to the home. We need an immediate reduction in acceptable lead levels to zero, as we now know lead accumulates in the body. We need audits and inventory of the municipal system to be under the purview and responsibility of the region, province, and ultimately the federal government. And lastly, we need an immediate program funded at least in part with the federal infrastructure funds to replace all municipal lead water supply lines and assist homeowners and municipalities financially with individual home supply connections. That's pretty much my report. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. We have some questions for you. Counselor Fernandez.
Thank you, Mr. Holdway, for coming in and bringing these points to us. So what are you, I mean, you've got some very detailed information there, and notwithstanding the concern of what we've seen happening with Flint, what are you asking of this council today?
What I'd like to see is some sort of committee struck between a variety of public participants plus your water department. We've already had discussions. I think there's a general feeling that a lot of these items are actually non-financial, like, for instance, the identifying and registering on title when it's known. I don't know if you're aware, but Kitchener estimates there are 1,500 lead supply lines to home that they know of, homes in this area. Most people don't have the $3,000 to $9,000. If it was registered on title, it could be dealt with with the change of the property. As a broker, we could easily work that in as an offset. So if you don't have the funds down the line, it would be taken care of. But most importantly, you know, when I'm closing a real estate deal, we know if there's any lead at all in the home, but we have no idea from the home to the street, and all the water will transition through that supply line.
So you're saying, where are you working out of that you're doing this already?
I'm a broker, but I'm also a contractor, and I've been a historic restoration developer in this region. We've encountered lead a lot. The contractors know better than to, when they replace a line, they know the next connection's lead, but there's no requirement for them to bring it to anybody's attention. And I would say the requirement is the opposite in real life. It's none of their business. Just go on with your work. It would be very easily, if it was mandated, that everyone identifying lead has to notify the appropriate department. Having worked at the Ministry of the Environment, I know that they put that level as an acceptable level, the 10 parts per billion, based on the fact that there's still a lot of existing lead lines. They were trying to be reasonable. But the reality is, we now know that lead is accumulative, and so 10 parts per billion is over, let's say, a liter of water. I mean, the consumption levels, children drink six times as much water as an adult. So there's, as they found, there's a real imbalance here. But it's a really easy way to deal with the problem, and it's a sort of bottom-to-top auditing of everything, so we actually know where it is, so we can deal with it. I've already spoken to the infrastructure people at the federal level. They're on board to include it in the idea of infrastructure money coming down tomorrow, that if municipalities identify, they want that to be part of it, they can. For instance, you're doing ion right now. You could easily identify in the digs those lead lines while you have the ground open.
And that was my next question, is have you presented this to the region? Because they are the ones that are responsible for the ion work.
I did present it to the region, and the region said, "But the buck stops at municipal level. You guys are the one who actually will direct the funds and the manpower and the replacement of those lines." So they were, they welcomed me to speak, but felt I should also take it to councils.
Absolutely. Well, thank you for this information. I see Mr. Malcolm is here, and part of his jurisdiction is our water supply. So I think that might be something that maybe not tonight, but certainly we needed to have a fulsome discussion with our staff to see where some of these ideas. Is it possible for you to leave the points that you brought up tonight, to either enter them with the clerk, so that we can have them as some background material, or is that your only piece of report?
I have already sent the entire speech to the clerk's office.
Okay. Thank you very much for doing that.
Thank you.
Okay, Counselor Yonetski.
Yeah, thank you for coming in and giving a very interesting commentary on the water issue. I assume, you mentioned you're into real estate and stuff of that nature. Do you have any other background, scientific-type background, engineering background?
I worked at the Ministry of the Environment in the beginning of my career.
Doing what?
I was the Information Services Officer for Ontario. I disseminated all the information coming out of the Ministry of the Environment on a public basis.
Okay. You expressed some really interesting comments with water, especially with the Flint, because I've been following that as well. I would assume you drink water as well, right?
I do.
Do you drink tap water, or you drink bottled water?
I drink bottled water.
Which is more safer, tap water or bottled water?
Well, that's a big question. As you may know, if you leave, and as in the body of this, I bring up bottled water. If you leave a bottle of water in a back room or a warm area for a year, you'll have bacteria levels that you could probably test a washroom for. Water is organic. It does, it does, over a period of time, especially still water, create bacteria. So a fresh, recent bottle of water is likely, I mean, again, it depends on municipality as well and the procedures. I've already been to three municipalities. I've seen significantly different procedures and different approaches to the issue of lead. I would say, coming here, your water department is probably the most progressive I've run into so far in terms of wanting to look at the issue.
So just further in terms of questioning, in terms of the water, the city, they have the municipalities have requirements to test the water for a variety of chemicals and et cetera, whereby bottled water sort of has fewer checks and balances when it's disposed. Is that correct? Is that the way you see it?
I wouldn't say so. I would say bottled water is tested many times a day when it's being bottled.
But for different chemicals I'm talking about?
Oh, for different chemicals? Yeah, I would think there would be ongoing tests. I know we had a site, actually, that in Cambridge, where they wanted to test the water as a supply source. And so we had them in there testing for a whole range of different items in the water.
Now, just continuing on with the lead issue, I understand that waters test municipalities for lead. Bottled companies, do they test that for their water for lead as well? Do you know?
I can't swear by it, but I'm quite certain from what I've seen, there's a whole range of testing that they have to go through with their water.
So, but you're not sure whether it's tested for lead or not in bottled water?
I can't say.
I don't know the answer.
I don't say positively. I have no relationship with any bottled water companies.
Okay. I know there's staff here, and I appreciate the questions and comments that you've raised, but that also raises our concern. Is the water in Kitchener and the Waterloo region as a whole safe from lead? And I gather it is. Otherwise, staff would be raising a red flag. I mean, that's what's happening in Flint. But maybe there is lead, but it's maybe below the provincial standards that it's acceptable. I don't know.
Can I respond to that part of the question?
Sure.
Yes, your staff has found a number of homes that have lead, that have exceeded that 10 parts per billion. They go back and they flush the line usually for five to 10 minutes. They'll run 20 to 100 gallons of water through the line, basically removing the water that's sitting still in the line. That's how you get it down below 10 parts per billion. What's happening in the case of these private homes? If the supply between the building and the street is lead, that water sits there most of the day. When you turn on the tap, you're moving the sediment in that line into a glass of water. And the reality is, and I know this from being at the ministry, no person goes to the water tap and runs the water for 10 minutes, especially not that we charge for water.
No, because you seem to be wasting it. That'd be the opinion, right?
Right.
Yeah. Thank you very much. Okay. Thanks. So those are all the questions we have.
Thank you very much. I appreciate the audience for this.
Perhaps we can ask Mr. Malcolm to come down, because I think there was a comment that Counselor Yonetski made that probably merits an official response from staff, so that it's very clear that the water in the city of Kitchener and in the region of Waterloo is in fact safe. Mr. Malcolm.
Through the mayor, yes. The water in Kitchener and the region of Waterloo is tested for many chemicals, many different types, including lead. The water in this area is safe to drink. It has been tested, and it's well below the guidelines for the ministry.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Etherington, do you have a question? Mr. Malcolm?
Yes, I do.
Okay, go ahead.
Just for an example, Mr. Malcolm, on my street, when they dug up the street, people were given the choice of replacing pipes from the house to the main. A lot of people did not do that. When you say the water, I believe you. The water is fine, but how do you know? Do you record when you do that kind of job? Would you have on record whether I have a lead pipe going to my house?
Through the mayor, as we're doing reconstruction, we locate any lead pipes. For any lead pipes that are owned by the city of Kitchener, we do have a program to replace those lead pipes. We notify the homeowner if we see on their side of the line that it's lead, to have them have that line replaced at the same time that we're there. In the time I've been at the city, we've only had one customer that has refused to replace their lead service. Every other customer that we have notified has replaced it.
Okay, thank you. Makes me feel better.
Thank you, Counselor Etherington. Counselor Yonetski.
Yeah, just further to those questions raised, the city, basically now the pipes that are water main lines that are being put in along the streets, and those lines that go from laterally to the unit are lead-free. Is that correct?
Through the mayor, that is correct.
Okay. So the pipelines that do have lead are basically in the older parts of the city, or how far out from the core of the city would they be in terms of not having lead pipes put in? Does it last 25 years, 50 years, 75 years?
Through the mayor, up to 1950, lead was predominant. After about 1954, lead was not part of the installation.
Okay.
However, you have to remember that inside the homes, the brass fixtures, soldering of copper pipes within the homes did contain lead in the solder itself. And that was only probably in the past eight to 10 years that there's been a push to have no lead in those sodders.
So even though the streets could be cleared based on city reconstruction and upgrades and all that stuff, the home itself, based on the piping, as you pointed out, being copper piping, but it's got, there's lead in the solder itself, that could be an issue, and the homeowner may not even know that. Is that correct?
Through the mayor, that is correct.
So buyer beware, or consumer education, I guess, maybe? Is that what it comes down to?
The regulations are there now to have no lead. So fixtures that are bought, so for your taps, shower heads, no lead is allowed in those products anymore. So as people replace and renovate their homes, they will be putting in items that do not contain lead. However, that's only recently. So if you renovated your home 10 years ago, there is potential to have lead within your pipes within your house.
Right. Thank you very much.
Counselor Fernandez.
So, Mr. Malcolm, I heard the number 1,500 from Mr. Holiday, but I, sorry, Holdway, but I've heard that number roughly from you in the past as well, when you've spoken to council. Should it be part of our mandate to notify residents where we know that there are lead pipes and inform them that there is a health risk to them?
Through the mayor, we're not part of the health unit, but we have identified the locations. We do incorporate it in our program. The ones that we have identified, we're looking at about 2020, based on our current installation of rehabilitating our pipes, to have those out of our system. We don't know the exact numbers. We don't know exactly what has been replaced prior to us getting to that street location. But we do have a plan by 2020 to eliminate the ones that we are aware of. We do have lead testing throughout the year, both spring and fall. We send letters out to homeowners to be part of that program. It's a volunteer program, and we do receive requests to have the water tested.
Okay. But that's the, what you're talking about is replacement by 2020 of our pipes, right? Not from the pipe that goes to the house?
Through the mayor, as I mentioned, that we do notify the homeowner at the time that we're there, because as we're there digging up our area, it makes sense, and it's a little bit cheaper for the homeowner to go in and do their side as well. And like I said, only one has refused since the time I've been here.
So we are taking some proactive actions to get this out of the system as quickly as possible?
Through the mayor, yes. We do have a budget line item for our lead replacement program, and that's the intent, is to replace all lead that we find within our system.
Okay. Do you ever suggest, and maybe it's beyond our purview, if you come upon a house that has lead piping, that the residents go and have a blood test to make sure that they know what, or do you suggest to the health unit that maybe they should speak to the residents, that they should have a blood test done?
Through the mayor, as staff, we do not recommend that to residents at all. It's basically up to the residents to decide what their acceptable levels are or risk that they want to take.
But they could, they could go to the regional health unit and ask to be tested, or are there private doctors?
Through the mayor, you just go to your family doctor and request Through the mayor, you just go to your family doctor and request as part of your testing to have that done.
Okay. Well, it's good that we are being televised tonight. Hopefully that we are adding an educational piece to, to tonight's council meeting. Thank you.
Council Marsh?
Thank you, Mayor Grabanovic. So, Mr. Malcolm, just want to clarify, when we have our own staff out and they, they witness a lead pipe, you're saying, I realize you've just said that we notify the homeowner or business owner, as the case may be. When we have contractors, is it also within our contract that the contractors go, proceed with the same way of going about?
Through, through the mayor, during reconstruction projects, we have city inspectors on site and they would be the ones that would identify that for us.
So, with LRT construction, is it the same? It's the same? Yeah?
Through the mayor, that's correct.
Okay. So, the delegate had several, you know, points that, and some of them are being refuted by what you're, what you're outlining for us. So, it'd be good to get a sense of what is, what is true and what, you know, so thank you for clarifying for us. But when we see those points in writing, I'd like to get some more clarification offline about what, what is the case and what could we be doing better? Yeah. Thanks.
Okay. Those are all the questions we have. Thank you, Mr. Malcolm. And thank you, Mr. Holdway, for coming in this evening. We'll now move on to the tenders. And Ms. Palmer Novakovic is, is here. So, we'll start with the first tender. Any questions on the bridge maintenance program contract? Oh, oh, yes. Council Gazola?
I was just curious as to what was pulled out. Normally, what was, is that a decision that council should have been involved in what do we not do or?
Ms. Palmer Novakovic?
Three, Mr. Mayor, the item that was removed was not a key component of the project. It was provisional items as noted within the report. So, provisional items are included in the contract in the event that they are required.
Thank you.
Council Yonetski on this item?
Yes.
Okay. I note in the report that half a dozen wards are affected. And I'm just wondering why not the entire city? I mean, you're looking at a two-year program and, sorry, a program that's sort of done biannually, basically. And I know there's lots of bridges here. And how many bridges are we looking at? So, we have to do them every other year. There must be a number of bridges and they all qualify under this $465,000 fee to, to be done. And we're only looking at half a dozen wards?
Um, I don't know who to answer that question. Ms. Fletcher?
Through you, Mayor Grabanovic. I, I don't have the specific details of the bridges that are being completed. But my understanding is the bridges that are being completed in the next two years fall within these wards. I can offline get a list of bridges if, if you wish.
So, how many bridges do we have throughout the whole city that, I guess maybe half of them will be done every year? Just a ballpark number.
Through the mayor, I don't have that information at my fingertips.
Could you get back to us with that?
I certainly can.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. We'll move on. Any, any questions on Brightup Street? Council Gazola?
Just a quick question. Is this, is this part of our utilities work where we have to replace the lines for our water and sewer lines? I wonder if, it would be interesting in the future if we, if somehow we could designate that just for, for our own information so that we can keep, sort of have an eye on the kind of work that you're doing, the amount of work you're doing. Put a little red star on it.
Council Gazola, it says that this is for replacement of roadway, curb and gutter, sidewalk, all underground services and surface works.
So, it's part, I thought, I want to know if it's all part of that big, big piece of work that you're, you're trying to catch up on?
Accelerated infrastructure. The answer is yes.
Thank you.
Okay. Item number three, closed circuit TV inspection. Any questions? Item four, Geotap GPS equipment. Any questions? Council Davy?
Just, just one. You may not know the answer, but I recall the previous, we've had this system for a while and the previous system couldn't actively monitor the location of vehicles. It was more of a download at the end of the day type of thing and then track it. Do you know if it's actively monitored with, within this tender?
Three, Mr. Mayor, I, I know that it does only because I have staff that utilize vehicles and we can track on an ongoing basis.
Okay, sorry. So, it is actively?
Correct.
Very good. Thank you.
Okay. Council Fernandez?
Yes. I just wanted to understand. It says that they're, they track fuel economy, driver behavior, emissions. Are we seeing some savings or payback on, on being able to use the system so that maybe we're making sure our drivers do a couple of things in a row so that we're not zigzagging across the city? Is that, is that helping this, that kind of scenario?
Ms. Fletcher?
Through the chair. It is helping with what the council member is describing. There are safety aspects that this system provides to us. It's also very much part of our being able to achieve our CVOR percentage rating, tracking driver's time, and part of our ISO accreditation as well.
Okay. Thank you.
Council Schneider on this item?
Just more of a comment. This came in really handy with answering a citizens inquiry that I had. Mr. Locke and Mr. Heisey sent me the information on a snowplow. And it, it shows that, it can show us the salt, the sand, the pre-ret, the liquid that was spread, the rates, the set point rates. Just fantastic information to have. And it even shows the snowplow root. So, just great. Thank you.
Okay. Moving on to item five, sanitary sewer system. Any questions? Council Fernandez?
So, I just wondered if, it talks that we were doing this in 2010 and 2011. So, is this an updated, I was trying to see if this is an updated model. I know it said something about it is necessary to keep the model accurate. So, is it just updating the model, the requirements? Or is it updating the system? I wasn't really clear on that.
Through the chair. This system is part of a, a big decision-making model that asset management uses and the engineering division uses. So, what it is, is it's taking industry standard information and some of our own information and doing exactly what you've just said is it's updating the data in the modeling system.
Do we have an understanding of what, that data, how does that data help us?
Through the chair. It is part of the information that's utilized to prioritize the work plan for the accelerated infrastructure program.
Okay. Thank you.
Council Gazola on this item?
On the next one.
Okay. So, moving on to Dune Pioneer Park. Council Gazola?
I'm just curious as to why this type of work, preparing a business case, is not done in-house. Why do we go out to hire consultants for almost $50,000?
Through you, Mr. Chair. This is standard practice for any of our previous new community center builds or additions. And it's frankly, an issue of capacity. We have limited management staff who could perform this function. And so, this is in order to get the work done.
I had a feeling that was the answer I was going to get. Thank you.
Council Galloway Sila?
Yeah, I'm just wondering, I'm not the mathematician in the group, but I'm wondering if there is actually a math error on this sheet in the financial implications. It looks like there's a deficit from this project. And then you have your net encumbrances. And I believe that number should be closer to 108, $550,000, sorry, $550 because it looks like it adds it versus subtracts it.
Through you, Mr. Mayor, you are correct. Good catch.
Yes. I found, I found something.
You got your, you got your A plus in math.
It doesn't change the tender. It just changes the bottom line of, of an account that we have. So.
Okay. Thank you for noting that, Council Galloway Sila. Council Yonetski on this item? Okay, go ahead.
Yeah, on, on this item, it's interesting to note that when documents were downloaded, there were 26 interested parties and yet only one response. And in regard to this response, I know it's a local firm, and I know you have a criteria that you go. But is the valuation of 50,000 and change appropriate unless there were other bidders on it? That may have given another, another perspective. I don't know.
So, through you, Mr. Mayor, we inquired with the other plan takers as to the reason for not submitting bids on this project. The rationale that we heard back consistently was that they felt the budget was too low for this project. However, when we evaluated the submission, the work plan and project team seemed capable and in line with the budget plan. So, we believe it is fair and reasonable.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. We'll move on to Four Far Park wetland retrofit. Any questions? None. Okay. Blair Creek Drive Bridge Construction. Council Fernandez?
So, we saw this presentation related to Blair Creek watershed at the environmental committee. And it was a very, it was a wonderful presentation made by Aquafor Beach. I realized that McLean Taylor is, is a construction company. And I spoke to our staff about it. They're, they're assuring me that they will really watch the integrity of this ecosystem. So, I know that that's not a question related to tenders because it's a, is a huge project cost. The entire project is being funded by the developer, right? We have no costs in this at all.
Who wants to take that?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. So, as noted within the financial, it is through a credit refund agreement.
Okay. That's what I understood. But I just wanted to be absolutely sure that we're not going to be hit with something down the road because there's been some, you know, mitigation that didn't, that failed on this area.
Yeah. It eventually comes out of our money.
Well, eventually. But I mean, upfront, they're upfronting $3 million, point, $3.8 million of the work to be done.
Right.
Right. And when we assume?
And it needs to be, sorry, it needs to be done to our standards still. Like, we still check that?
Exactly. But that's, that's why the conversation I had with Mr. Spear. Okay. That's all I wanted to be, be really clear about that. Thank you.
Okay. Moving on to Old Huron Road reconstruction. Any questions? Council Fernandez?
Okay. So, again, I realize we're in tenders. But when I spoke to residents along this area, nobody was aware that any work is being done. We talked today about community engagement. And even though I spoke with staff about this previous to the tender, I'm still not comfortable with the fact that if something is going forward, that residents don't know that there's work going to be done on their street that's going to have huge implications and changes to their street. If we want community engagement, why are we not at least sending them a letter saying this tender is coming forward? This is a project that's happening on your street and we want you to know about it. I know that they can't change the tender. But at least they know about what's happening on their street. Right now, these people don't know anything, except they do now because I called them.
Ms. Fletcher?
Through the chair. I am just following up on staff's response. And there is an intention to engage the street. What they were waiting for was getting to a certain point in design. There is, there's a balance between going to the, the residents too early in the process and not being clear on what it is we're doing. So, very shortly, they will be engaging the street in discussions.
And with all due respect, Ms. Fletcher, I know it's a 60%, once we get to 60% design. But then, we've spent an awful lot of money already on that. And I know we know, we've done an EA. We know what we're going to be doing there. Why wouldn't we at least give the residents the respect to know that there's going to be work that's going to be done and there's going to be significant upheaval? It's something I really want to see us review in the process of how we do this kind of streets.
Council Davy?
I just want to clarify because my street was redone like five years ago. And I recall, like, residents may not, may not be notified in terms of, in time for the tender, which I don't think is really necessary anyway. But residents are notified. I remember getting a letter in my, my mailbox and someone knocking the door before the construction actually occurred. So, if that's, if that's the concern?
No, this is at, this, they're, they're going to be 60% into the design before residents are going to be notified. That's, that's three quarters, that's two thirds of the way.
I'm talking about the actual construction. Okay.
That's, that's where my argument is. And I'm just wanting to make a point tonight on that.
Council, uh, sorry. Ms. Fletcher, you want to add something?
Through the chair. I was just going to follow up with
Okay.
similar comments.
Okay, that's fine. Council Gazola on this item? The next item? Okay. We'll move on then to road improvement.
I, I
Council Gazola?
I want to ask you again, is this part of the utility problem? The reason I ask if it is, I, I wonder what, this seems to be a newer area of the city and why we would be dealing with it there before we would deal with some more critical areas in the inner city. The only, the only reason I'm asking.
Mr. Chaplin?
Through, Mr. Mayor, essentially, no. The only portion of this program that relates to what you're referring to is the top course of asphalt on projects that were completed in a prior year. So, this tender includes the cost of doing the final course of asphalt, I believe, the year following construction. So, in the background, that references the...
Are, are you talking about the old Huron Road?
No, you were referring to the next tender.
No, I'm sorry. I'm, I, I'm sorry. I'm dealing with old Huron Road.
Oh, you're still on Huron Road. Okay.
I'm sorry. And my question remains the same. I want to know if it's, is it part of the utility problem? And if it is, I thought this is a newer area. Why would we be doing this prior to more work in the inner part of the city?
Can anyone answer that with respect to Huron Road? Ms. Fletcher?
Through the chair. It's not a pure reconstruction project because it appears to also include streamworks on Strasburg Creek and upgrades to the road itself.
So, it's not part of our so-called utility problem?
Not in the, not in the pure sense. There are some replacements of existing infrastructure, but also upgrades to what's presently there.
So, the reason it's going ahead is because of the, the creek work and that?
Uh, it appears to be the roadway reconstruction, but not the sewer. So, it's not a complete reconstruction and also includes additional streamworks. Yes.
Council Fernandez, you said you could add some light to this?
Yes. Council Gazola, this little piece of road, it's old Huron. It's very, very old, an old, old piece of, of Huron Road. It's not the newer part.
So, it's the old, old Huron, not the new old Huron?
That's right. And it gets confusing.
Okay. The next three, I presume are with respect to item number 10, the general, the overall list of road improvements. Council Galloway Sila?
Yeah, just noting the surplus that ends up coming out of this. Sorry, just want to make sure. So, this is a, a separate account. Is there any merit in moving some of these funds into our accelerated infrastructure program to try and get more pipes done? It's a similar question I'm going to ask about the next tender where we had some surpluses in some of the tenders to see if we can get any more work done sooner than later at a lower cost because costs are just going to continue to increase?
Mr. Chaplin?
Through the chair. I know it's engineering's intention to look at that question with respect to the reconstruction program where there have been surpluses. In this case, it wouldn't be their intention to. They have a similarly large backlog of pure reservicing projects to do. So, as noted in the tender report, their plan would be to run a fall program again this year as they have in, in previous years. So, that surplus is simply held over for the fall tender.
Okay. And now, I will be asking the same question on the next tender with regards to some of the surpluses as well. So, just to prepare you for that.
And the answer to that question was yes. It is the intention to look to see what can be further accelerated based on these favorable tender prices.
Yeah, because 1.5 million in favorable work on the tenders is a pretty significant savings and ability to continue to do some more work will be good.
Okay. Council Singh?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. My question was similar to address the, you know, favorable def, the surplus. But that's been answered by Mr. Chaplin.
Okay. Council Anidas?
Yes, through you, Mayor Grabanovic. My question is regarding with this tender and, My question is regarding with this tender and in particular with Highview Drive. I was under the impression that it was, some surface repair was going to be next year and not this year.
Is that maybe a question that staff can get back to you on after, after today?
Yeah, it doesn't have to be addressed tonight.
Okay, that's fine. Staff will get back to you on that. Counselor Fernandez on this item?
Yeah, so some of these, these roads, and especially Amherst, this is only asphalt replacement because there is a plan. There's been discussion about sidewalk and curbs on that street. But would they be doing them simultaneously? And if you're not sure, then I can, who would I send an email to to find out?
I can call up the staff tomorrow.
Okay, that'd be great. Thank you.
Counselor Gazola?
I'll go next one.
Okay, so I have just one question on, on this one. Will there be an opportunity, depending on what happens in tomorrow's budget, for us to extend these tenders to additional streets in 2016 if we find that we're able to get some new dollars or additional dollars? Mr. Chaplin?
The answer is yes. To a point, there becomes a threshold over which would be wise to re-tender. And so, again, our thinking is that if we can't do it as a part of this tender, we would build that into the scope of the fall tender and still do the work this year.
And then I guess, depending on if we re-tender, I guess my concern is if everyone goes to the marketplace and starts re-tendering, I think we're going to see some, some, some price inflation. So, you know, staff is going to need to, I guess, figure if that makes sense or not as opposed to trying to extend if we have a good rate right now.
Right, and so I think we will look at that. We need to be fair to all vendors that bid on the scope of work. And if what you're saying is true, though, I suspect that most parties to tenders like this would not be willing to renegotiate at current rates. They'll want to see revised pricing based on...
I guess that's true as well. Okay. Next item then, number 11, Counselor Gazola?
Yeah, we're dealing with a lot of tenders tonight, but if you take out that asphalt one, we're dealing with about $6, $7 million. Now, the CIO has dealt with almost $9 million. Why, why does it come during the year like this that we don't have meetings that these things come here? I don't...
So through you, Mr. Mayor, wasn't that the CIO awarded those because of delegation similar to summer council? It was that the CIO was, delegated the authority to approve tenders for road reconstructions where there's council-approved sidewalk infill within the project?
I mean, we haven't been off that long a time that these could not come to council along with all our other tenders. There's, there's $8 million in three, in three tenders here, $9 million. Should those not have come here? And the least, and the least, should we not get the same type of report that you send to the CIO? Should that not be included with this package?
Mr. Chaplin?
Through the, through the chair, I'll respond to both parts of the question. As Ms. Palmer-Vacovic indicated, this has nothing to do with council's inability to award the tender because of a delay. Mr. Tiaghi came to council with changes to the sidewalk infill program. One of those changes was a requirement to hold public meetings to deal with sidewalk infill projects when council renders a decision on whether or not there is to be infill. At that point, the CIO was delegated authority to award those tenders so that they would not come back to a public meeting. That's happened in both of these cases. This is the second such report that you've seen. Certainly, we're in your hands in terms of the format of the report. We've done two of these now. If there's different information that you require, we'll take council's direction on that.
Well, the tender here, one is for, for $5 million, is that all for sidewalks?
No, this is for the full reconstruction project, including sidewalk infill.
So, so it's for the full project, so why doesn't it come here?
We can recirculate the report and resolution. This was a decision of council to delegate the authority to award these tenders to the CIO, provided it's within budget and the sidewalk infill has been approved by council.
Oh, I think we need to look at that. This is three, three tenders totaling $9 million, and we really don't get a full report on them, and if it's the summertime and a lack of meetings, I can understand them, but we're meeting almost every other week here. I think we've gone a little too far on this.
Counsel, item 12, thermostatic mixing valves. Any questions? Okay, somebody want to move the tenders? Moved by Counselor Yanides, seconded by Counselor Marsh. Any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed, that's carried. We dealt, we'll now go into reports of the committees, and we'll start with Community and Infrastructure Services, Counselor Galloway, Silak.
It's been moved by myself and seconded by Counselor Dave Schneider that items one through 14 be approved on the Community Infrastructure Services Committee, noting that we already dealt with the one item that was, been referred to this meeting with regards to the grant that we approved earlier in the meeting.
Counselor Gazola?
Curious, where do we stand on the wagon dog care issue? I was trying to read that. Are we, what are we approving?
I think that's coming back at a future meeting, is it not? Counselor Marsh?
Well, does it, it doesn't say that.
It's because there's no, there was no recommendation. Counselor Marsh?
So that was deferred to the April 25th council meeting?
And it's under Finance Number Eight?
Under Finance, yeah.
So we'll get to that one in a minute, Counselor Gazola. No, it's okay. Any other, okay, they've been moved and seconded. All those in favor? Opposed, that's carried. We'll move on to Finance, Counselor Davey.
Davey, oh, thank you. Pardon me. It's been moved by myself and seconded by Counselor Marsh that the 10 items in Finance and Corporate Services Committee be adopted.
Counselor Gazola, is your question answered then on...
I'm sorry. What are you, what are you moving? There's, how many items do you have?
There's 10, so number eight refers to the dogs.
Okay, I'd like to deal first, I'd like to, I'd like to pull out item number 10 to deal with it separately. I'm just trying to read where it says that the dog thing is deferred until April the 25th.
So the last line says staff be directed to approach the business owner to arrange for members of council to tour in advance of the April 25, 2016 meeting?
I read that, I read that three times, but it still doesn't tell me that it's going to be deferred until then.
Mr. Mayor, can I comment on that?
Oh, yeah, Mr. Chap, Mr. Chaplin?
The matter hasn't been deferred. You're dealing with the approval tonight. There was considerable discussion on this point at committee, and I believe there was a sentiment on the part of members of council that you didn't want to put the applicant through all these hurdles, only to have the issue come back if they met the conditions, but have council change its mind at that point in time. If you pass this motion tonight, you will be giving conditional approval to the license, provided they revise the site plan and comply with it, address the signage, deal with the noise mitigation, and cease overnight boarding. To arrange a tour, that will happen on April 25, but if they meet the conditions, the approval will be granted.
Okay, and that's what I wanted clarified. So we are approving it tonight, and the reason I didn't support it last week was because I, so how do we, when does this come back if those, all those requirements are not fulfilled? How does that, how does that come back? Normally, under a deferral, we would deal with that, but in this case, it's, we've approved it now. So who, it's not up to me, is it, to go and see if everything's been done?
I think the implication is that if they do not comply with these conditions and they continue to operate, it becomes an enforcement matter. And so only if and when there's an enforcement challenge that requires council intervention would it come back. The expectation is that they...
So do we direct staff to enforce, to, to, like, shouldn't at least say that we direct staff to check it out, or?
No, I think in, in many respects, the reason why these issues are here is because enforcement action was initiated, and we're now trying to bring them to a satisfactory resolution.
So I think if I can help here, Counselor Gazola, I think what we've directed, that the license be issued as long as these conditions are met, and, and staff will issue a license once those conditions are met. I think the assumption is that it's going to happen in a reasonable period of time. If it's not happening in a reasonable period of time, then staff would bring it forward back to us as an enforcement matter as they did the first time.
Okay, that, you've said a different thing. You just said, staff will issue a license when these conditions have been met.
Correct.
I'm fine with that, but that, okay, all right, that's, so I would like to deal with that one separately, and I would like a recorded vote on it. And I would also like 10 dealt with separately and the $300,000 pulled out separately. And I'd like a recorded vote on that one, too.
Okay, so I'll deal with, so Counselor Yanetski?
Eight still.
You want eight done separately as well?
No, no, I just, I just have a question on, on number eight. And I understand where Counselor Gazola is coming from, and his questions were very, very good, provided some clarity with staff's responses on it. Yet now I wonder, if this is going to be approved tonight, then why do we have to do a site visit, you know, before the 25th of April? I mean, it seems redundant.
I think the site visit was just for the information of council. I think the site visit was just to show council regardless of what was in the air, just to show, because a number of members of council were quite impressed with what they heard, and they said they'd like to, to, to visit the site. So I don't think it had any bearing on, on the, on the motion.
Yeah, I mean, I do think probably in retrospect, that last paragraph doesn't need to be there. Quite frankly, I think it was there when we were thinking of a deferral, which is the way everything started at committee, and then we ended up with a final motion that wasn't a deferral. Counselor Marsh, was your motion, I believe?
Thank you. Yeah, that was a messy discussion, and we did arrive at conditional approval, but the original motion had been to defer it until the conditions had been met, and that was the context in which the site visit was decided on. I will caution that I, I would, I wonder whether or not all the conditions are going to be met by, within a reasonable time, and it may come, come before us again if staff and the owner are unable to come to an agreement on all of the conditions. And it would be, I think, helpful if that were to come forward for council to, to indeed take a tour. So I'm going to go on a tour, invite everyone to go, even if we remove it from this motion.
All right, I appreciate the answer, and I do welcome still following through with, with the tour to get a better appreciation what some of the issues are there hand, firsthand, and knowing that they've got, they'll receive approval subject to the fulfillment of these conditions, if staff still have issues, and of course, the local council are still involved with addressing some of this, this could come back in the future. But I'm agreeable to, to its approval.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Schneider?
Hey, you just, it's very clear that it said, "Subject to the following conditions," that the conditions aren't met, they won't get the license.
Okay, thank you. So we will now deal with the balance of the report, except for numbers eight and 10. All those in favor? Opposed, that's carried. Number eight, all those in favor? Oh, you asked for a recorded vote? Sorry, okay. Okay, apologies, recorded vote. We'll now deal with item number 10. Go ahead, Counselor Gazola.
Part of this, and I think it's, it's quite a step forward, and that's why I've asked for a recorded vote. Now, I did ask for the, the $300,000 to be pulled out. I didn't support that, I still don't support it. What we're trying, we're starting to do is spending the money before we, we've even saved it. I said it's premature to start setting aside a reserve. Perhaps down the road, we'll set aside a lot more than that. So that's why I wanted it pulled out separately.
Okay, thank you. We'll deal with that item separately. Counselor Singh?
Yes, a quick question to staff, and this is something I should have asked through the, through the committee meeting. I am very much supportive of the initiative and as well as the trial project. My question is related to the trial project. Did we anticipate in facilitating some sort of a hackathon to kind of make use of our tech community and the ecosystem that we already have developed within the region?
Mr. Chaplin?
Through the mayor, I'm not aware that our thinking is that evolved yet, although I do know there are plans separate from this to look at a hackathon later this year, earlier next year, and so I can take it back to staff and see if there is potential that the two might intersect in some way.
Would it be okay if I were to, would you need direction, or if potential exists to utilize a hackathon towards a smart city initiative pilot project, or?
I think it's worth exploring, and so whether it forms part of the motion or not, I'll take it back, and the staff that are involved in planning for that hackathon can work with staff that are involved in this project to see if there's potential overlap between them.
Okay, so if I might be allowed, I have something written, but it's simply to the terms of, as Mr. Chapman has clarified, if potential exists, staff be directed to utilize a tech startup community through a smart city hackathon to explore opportunities and solution towards a smart city pilot initiative. Is that clear?
Okay, you, you want that as part of the motion then?
Yeah, if potential exists.
Okay. Clerk, I guess I'm just going to ask for some direction, since he was the mover of the original motion, which belongs to committee. How can he move an amendment?
I didn't, I wasn't the mover.
Oh, sorry, Scott did. Okay, thank you. Okay, that, no, no, right now, it's Scott. Sorry, yes, okay. If we can post that, you have it written out?
I do, yeah.
Okay. Apologies.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, it doesn't say if potential exists.
We will deal with that separately. Yeah, just have to have it posted. It's a process.
Apologies on the rushed handwriting. Yes, it is horrible.
Okay, and is there a second for the amendment? Seconded by Counselor Yanides. Okay, so I will deal with the amendment first, then I will deal with the $300,000 clause, and then I'll deal with the balance of the recommendation. Okay, go ahead, Counselor Gazola.
I'm afraid I don't really understand what this is all about.
Counselor Singh, can you explain to Counselor Gazola?
Counselor Gazola, a hackathon is where you pose a, a question to, or a problem to...
I know what a hackathon is, okay? I'm just, why this is all of a sudden come up here tonight?
Well, it's part of the smart cities initiative pilot project that our own internal staff would be putting in place, and I think there's a lot of, you know, there's a lot of talent that exists in our community already that would be able to facilitate and help with that pilot project. And I just want to see if it's available and for us to be able to utilize it.
Okay, so with that, I'm going to deal with the voting on the, Counselor, Counselor Fernandez?
I just want to know, are you asking that the $300,000 be used for this, or just this is an initiative outside of, outside of whatever's going on here?
Counselor Singh?
Well, it would be part of the pilot project. It doesn't have any funding allocated, and I think the, the big part of this is if potential exists, and it would be a encompassing part of the pilot project, I think. And I think that would, my, my... My really pushes, and I thought that staff would look into this on their own, this is only to further encourage this, it's primarily to save costs.
Okay, so we will deal with the amendment. All those in favor?
Which one?
The amendment that's up on the screen. All those in favor? Opposed, that's carried. We'll now deal with the 300,000 clause. Yep, okay, recorded vote on the 300,000 clause. All those opposed? That's carried. The balance of the report, recorded vote. Opposed? That's carried, and now I have to take the balance of the report as amended. So, recorded vote, I guess?
No?
No? Okay. We have to do the balance of the report as amended. So the amend... So we now would include the amendment? I don't need to do that? That's covered off? Okay, okay, so we don't need to do that. We'll move on to Planning and Strategic Initiatives Committee. Counselor Singh. Madam Clerk?
Oh, okay, yeah. Yeah, it's not the mayor's fault.
Not my fault, it's the most's fault.
Through you, Mr. Mayor, item two for Planning and Strategic Initiatives Committee has already been dealt with, and item number one moved by itself and seconded by Counsel Inaitis.
Okay, we have several speakers. Counselor Etherington.
Through you, Mr. Chair, just a couple of comments. I apologize, I couldn't be at the committee meeting, so I just wanted to put in my two cents' worth on the Communitech issue. And I wanted to say that I'm glad to see that councilors agreed at Planning Committee to support the $300,000 grant, and then debate the requested, I think, the remaining $1.2 million in municipal grants over the next four years. To debate that for the budget in 2017, because by next year, I think we might reach a place where we could legitimately provide some kind of argument for a repayable loan to Communitech. After all, we're talking about the figures I saw, $15 million expansion in the coming years at Communitech, with 7.25 pledged by senior governments, hopefully, $6 million in private revenue, $1.5 million from this municipality. Now, we have no way of knowing if the federal provincial governments will come through with that 7.25 million, or that the 6 million will be raised from private sources. So I think we very much need to talk about the potential of loans, or reducing that requested $300,000 a year. Now, I don't know what the outcome of that debate will be, but I really support any move toward having that, and I'm sure we will have that. Thank you.
Counselor Gazola?
I have a question of staff, a couple of questions. To me, this is a million and a half dollar question, it's not the 300,000 this year. The question I have is, if the city does not provide this funding that they're requested, does the thing... Does this whole $15 million project, whatever it is, die? Or does it carry on?
Mr. Rigir?
Through you, Mayor Verbenovich. Apologize for my voice here, just getting over a bit of a cold. As I understand it, right now, there are a variety of funding applications in the works, and those processes are working their way through, just like ours is. So I would expect that you'll see a variety of responses from other funding agencies. I don't know what the final decisions are going to be. I can't imagine that the project would cease if ours doesn't move forward, but I know that they will be short on some significant funding, particularly on their need to do some significant renovations inside the building. So I would say it probably changed the complexion of the project, but of course, we won't know until all the funding applications are considered.
Okay, but I think the answer I'm hearing is that this project will go forward with or without our money. So I think that's what I'm hearing.
I don't think that's what Mr. Rigir said. I think what he said is it would change.
It'll change considerably, and what we... We won't know until all of the funding applications that Communitech has submitted are coming for... Or, you know, are completed.
Well, why do we have to make our decision, then, before all these decisions are made? Why, that's not very fair, is it? We're the smallest player in this big game, and we're required to make our decision up front.
Through you, Mayor Verbenovich, I think that we're in exactly the same position that we were in 2008 or '09, when we made the initial financial commitment, in the sense, we were the first, you know, player to the table to make a decision, and that helped facilitate the process for other funding applications that Communitech moved forward with. But I think this is really just coincidental, because all of the other funding applications are already in the works, and our decision process happens to be moving ahead of the others.
You say there are... The others are on board, so is that a go for the others?
What I said was that the other funding applications have been submitted, and the processes for decisions are underway, but ours happens to be coming to a head earlier than the others, so...
Well, I go back and say, why does ours sit like that? But that's fine, we're gonna run around. The other question I have is, have we heard anything from the region? Has anybody heard anything from the region on this? Has Communitech approached the region?
I'm not aware of the discussions, any discussions that they've had, may have had with the region. Our understanding from the last meeting was that we would engage in some discussions about regional involvement or other municipal involvement as part of the consideration for the next stage in the funding process, but I may have misunderstood that. If I did, I apologize.
My final question deals with how do we measure... What's measurable in this as to... How do we see that we're... What do we expect to come out of this, and how do we measure that?
Yes, well, first of all, the portion of the project that we will be funding, if council approves this this evening, will be capital improvements to the space, so it will be easy for us to document whether or not those works took place, and Communitech has assured us they'll be completely accountable to that. Communitech has identified a number of objectives that they hope to achieve over the next little while. One of them will be to increase the number of enterprise companies that they have in their innovation lab space, from the current 11 to 25, I believe. And they also are increasing their available space and services to growth stage companies, and I think they've established some metrics for that. But certainly, you know, the long-term performance of this will be... They've assured us that they're happy to report on the outcomes, and they will be obliged to do that for their other funding sources as well.
Well, I'll have a comment when appropriate time.
Okay, we'll loop back into it. Counselor Fernandez?
Yeah, so last week, I had a number of questions about Communitech, and I followed up with a lot more questions to staff, so I want to thank them for responding in depth. But out of those discussions came, and everybody should have received my email earlier today, as well as my amendment to the Communitech motion, so I just want to point that out as well. I have a couple of questions related to the budget that we had in our report. One of the items is furniture, $173,000. Now, when we went on the tour, I commented many, many times to Mr. Klugman, "Wow, there's an awful lot of furniture here, wow, there's an awful lot of great space here." I know we can't tie our funding to how they're going to disperse it, but my... I guess I just want to know that they are going to be sensitive to the fact that there's many businesses, small NGOs, who are out there trying to find bits and pieces like this, that if they're not going to use it, it doesn't end up at the landfill, that they'll, you know, disperse it appropriately. My other question is, do we ever get an understanding of what the salaries of the executive positions are through Communitech? Since it's publicly funded, would their salaries be posted on the Sunshine List, or would we have access to understanding what those salaries are?
Okay, on that second question, Counselor Fernandez, I really... We're dealing with a capital grant request, and I don't think that, quite frankly, is part of the issues that we're debating in this council chamber. They would meet the requirements if they obtain funding through the province of having to report under the Sunshine List, and that reporting is available online.
Okay, I know that last week, we had talked about, somebody had offered the suggestion of having somebody sit on the board. Do we have any further discussion or comment about that? Was that just sort of left up to you to investigate, Mr. Rigir?
We've informed them of council's interest in that process, and again, my understanding was that we would have those conversations leading up to the next discussion regarding the remainder of the funding for the future four years.
Okay, so my addendum to the... Or my amendment to the motion is on the screen, so...
I might, if I may, Mayor Verbenovich, I might speak to it, because we did receive some additional information in regard to your proposed amendment. Abby Peters responded to us on this yesterday afternoon, or pardon me, this afternoon, and I apologize, we haven't forwarded it on to you, but they do actually have an application in for the renewal of funding for Ascent into the provincial government. So there is a process underway to renew funding for the organization that they've supported there, that is... That you bring to our attention through the motion.
Okay, but nevertheless, anybody who wanted to try to locate a green hub or an ecohub would have to apply through the Ascent program. What I'm just... What I'm suggesting is that possibly, the fact that Communitech's mission has always been to foster non-for-profits, that this is an opportunity to strongly encourage them to set aside some space, to make that opportunity happen, especially because it would be another startup, it would be a little bit different from a tech startup, but it would incorporate a tech component as well, I would believe. So anyways, I guess the discussion should happen with council as to what they feel, how they feel about this motion, so I'll just put it... I'll just table it right now.
Okay, is there a second? Okay, Counselor Davey?
Yeah, question on the motion before us, if I could, Mr. Mayor. I'm a little unclear in the wording, so are you saying that in order for the $300,000 to go through, they have to... Communitech must include expansion for a green ecohub?
Counselor Fernandez? Just hang on a second until we can get you clicked in. Okay, go ahead.
Okay, so the wording I used was that should also include that space be set aside or be included in the expansion for support of a green hub. I don't... It's not saying that the $300,000 is tied to that. I'm asking that that... Part of that request funding should consider this as well.
Okay, that's a different... Okay, I'm okay with that. And sorry, Mr. Rigir, if I could, I'm not completely familiar with the Ascent program. Are you aware, does Communitech currently... I'm just wondering what the redundancy of the motion, does Communitech currently not support NGOs, or if a green startup came to Communitech, would they look at supporting them if they thought it was viable?
Mr. Rigir?
Yes, through you, Mayor Verbenovich, we understand that they're fully supportive of the Ascent program. They've provided us with some additional information. The Ascent program up to this point has supported 25 social ventures through five cohorts. They had 37 entrepreneurs, social entrepreneurs involved. They've got a record of raising almost a million dollars in capital investment for those companies, or helping them to raise, rather, and created 78 jobs in that process. So I... My impression from what I've... What Abby's provided for us is that they're fully on board with the Ascent program, and that if the funding is available, they'll continue to support that program with space and services. So there's nothing in what we've heard so far that indicates that it's in any way contrary to what they intend to do.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Singh?
Yeah, I'm just kind of comforted by everything that Mr. Rigir has said, so there's no, I guess, restrictions on this taking place already. And my... A little bit more clarification from Counselor Fernandez, just include space that be set aside seems a bit arbitrary. What are we looking at as for space? I know there's considerable expansion that will take place, but still, space is quite limited, and it's, you know, very sought for real estate. What did you have in mind as part of this motion?
Counselor Fernandez?
So I think it would have to depend on the application of whoever came forward with the concept of a green slash ecohub. I don't think it would be any different than any small startup that came to Communitech and said, maybe, you know, "We just want a desk," or "We just want a small area that we can have some working space." So I can't qualify the area, because I don't know if there's been an application. I just know that there's been a lot of discussion around an ecohub, and that there is movement towards that. I just wanted to make sure that that opportunity didn't get overlooked by Communitech.
Yeah, I know, but your motion is saying, as part of the expansion, include that space be set aside, so there... The motion is asking for them to set aside space even before those applications come forward. This is... Our 300,000 is not incumbent on them doing this, right?
No, I just answered that with Counsel Davey.
And I'm seeing the motion the way it is on paper, so can you just clarify it one more time? I may have missed it when Counsel Davey raised it.
I said that the space could be set aside to include... Be included in this expansion. I mean, now I've learned today, or just now, from Mr. Rigir, that the Ascent program funding is possibly going to be re-implemented. That was not the case when I wrote this.
Okay, that's fine.
Counselor Marsh?
Well, I really appreciate Counselor Fernandez's intent. I'm just wanting to ask a bit more... Well, I really appreciate Counsel Fernandez's intent, I'm just wanting to ask a bit more clarification. So the Ascent program, as I understand it, is for any social enterprise company slash nonprofit, that could be eco-related or not, correct? And so, and on the flip side, a green eco hub, as I've understood it in previous conversations with people in the community, would not necessarily be a social enterprise, nor would it even be involving a tech startup, is that correct?
Counsel Fernandez?
So my understanding with the people who I spoke with at the Environmental Committee, that it could be either or, but that they wanted to be able to move forward on something, knowing that Communitech was expanding, that there could be some room for them, that it would fit in with their mission to help foster non-for-profit initiatives. That was really the key focus of the discussion that I had.
So you're, okay, but the green eco hub could involve, you know, many organizations that have nothing to do with tech, nor social enterprise, correct?
Yep.
And so is what you're asking, that Communitech set aside some desk space or some space for the green eco hub, even if it has nothing to do with tech or social enterprise?
Right.
Okay.
Counselor Yanetski?
I was away at the, when this was considered back a couple of weeks ago at the meeting, but I did send in a email to council expressing my thoughts at that time on this particular topic, that I was not in favor of any of this money being, going to the expansion, excuse me, for Communitech. This is basically, you know, to support these groups, and Communitech is doing well, and the startups have been feeding off each others in that development over the last few years, that basically, this is the type of project that's really mandated by the province and federal government, and that's where the money should be coming from, and it is, but now we're also asking for municipal government to be involved, sort of like another Edith project to some degree, from my opinion.
Counsel Yanetski, we're in the question mode, do you have a question there?
Oh, I thought we were in discussion.
We're not in discussion yet.
Oh, well.
We still have questions.
Sorry, I don't have a question.
Okay, Counsel Schneider, do you have questions?
Just on the amendment.
Okay, go ahead.
Okay. Now, when you were asked, Counsel Fernandez, you said that they should consider, but the wording is "should also include," so could that wording be changed to "should consider that space be set aside"?
Sure, I'd be open to that.
Okay. Counselor Davey, you have a question? Comment, Counsel Yanetski, question or comment?
Yeah, I have a question.
Okay, Counsel Yanetski?
I just want to get a little more clarification from Counsel Fernandez, because the discussion that she had there with Counsel Marsh's comments, it's sort of what the $300,000 could be part of something that's not really part of their mandate as Communitech. Like, if they're, Communitech is, I don't think they're going to be, I'm not sure if that's part of their mandate, so that's where I want to get a little bit of clarification from Counsel Fernandez, and then maybe of staff.
Okay, so I'm still on, so I guess what I was focusing on, what I said to Counsel Marsh, is that the mission to help foster non-for-profit initiatives. The Ascent program does help assist socio, sorry, what was the wording you, social enterprise, as well as technical startups. I'm not sure how, what this green eco hub is going to actually look like, but I would imagine, from the conversations I've had with residents, sorry, members of advisory committees at the Environmental Committee and at other committees, that there is a movement afoot that would incorporate any number of these components, directly connected to Communitech's mission to help foster non-for-profit initiatives.
Okay, but if they're not tech, if they're not tech industries, that would not be part of their mandate.
Counsel Yanetski, I can't, I haven't seen their application, I just know that this is, this is something that I'm interested in, this is something that there is a movement afoot to try and work with Communitech to set up an eco and green hub, and I just, I thought this was the perfect opportunity to bring this forward, that's all.
Okay, all right, are you done with your questions? Okay, I have some questions.
I just have one more question.
You have one more, go ahead, Counsel Yanetski.
As part of Sustainable Waterloo Region, isn't that part of what green eco hub is it is already, so isn't this kind of like double dipping?
No, it's not.
Actually, it is.
Not according to them.
Okay, go ahead. Mr. Rigier?
I know that Sustainable Waterloo Region has got the objective of establishing a hub for sustainable industries, and companies particularly committed to sustainability. And I'm not current on the status of that project right now, but certainly they're very active in working towards that objective, and they're, you know, they provide a lot of support to both private and nonprofit, public sector organizations in the same regard.
Okay, all right, thank you. Okay, you have a question, Counsel Marsh?
We had an amendment. Hi, we had an amendment to the amendment, and it was agreed upon, so if we could have that on the, could I please ask the clerk to amend it on the overhead?
Just adding the word "should consider."
Okay, I'm going to, I'm going to ask a question, some questions myself now. I guess first of all, Counsel Fernandez, have you had any dialogue with Communitech on this prior to tonight?
Yes, I did, I spoke with Mr. Klugman while I was on the tour, a number of times, as well as Mr. Ryan and Mr. Bennett, we had.
And were they supportive, was Mr. Klugman supportive of this?
Mr. Klugman thought it was a really good idea and a good opportunity, should somebody come forward with that initiative. Should somebody come to him and say, "We would like to establish an eco or green hub," he said, "I don't know what, he said, "I don't know what you're going to name it," I said, "I'm not naming it anything, I just know that," would you be interested and would you support that?
Right, I guess my, what, I'd be very surprised if Mr. Klugman would agree to this without there being some sort of plan and some sort of business thought behind this, and I'm wondering if Mr. Rigier is aware of this, because I mean, I've never encountered a situation where we start, you know, and all due respect, and, you know, there's merit in the idea, but we're, quite frankly, we're creating incubator hubs and policy on the fly around the horseshoe for an organization that we don't even, that we don't, aren't even the board of. Mr. Rigier, can you help me?
Well, I took from Ms. Peters' response to our question, that the Ascent, because I think, if I understand Counselor Fernandez's concern, it was largely around the idea that the Ascent program was at risk. And my understanding is that they expect to hear quite soon about the future funding for the Ascent program. It's not guaranteed by any stretch, as I understand it, but they have applied, and that they hope if they can, if they do get the funding, that they'll continue with the program as it's been running for the last little while. And that that particular program would support, you know, social enterprises of a diverse nature. But I agree that it would be odd for us to dictate a development of a new program kind of on the fly. It's certainly something that we can, you know, we can enter into a conversation with Communitech about, and learn more about their program and support in various ways. I'm not sure if it does require a resolution, to be honest, but, you know, if what we're asking is for them to consider, and to put our, you know, support behind it, I doubt if it'd be doing any harm.
Yeah, like, the concern I have is that it creates, it makes it very difficult for us to be throwing these kinds of ideas onto the table without there having been any research, any study done behind it, and so on. That's the challenge here. And to try to link it to our funding request for something totally different.
But the funding request is for the expansion, which is opening up the opportunity for more startups of all kinds, so really, it's tied to the fact that they're asking us for funding for an expansion, so this was a perfect opportunity to move forward on a conversation that I had on the tour, and a conversation I had with Environmental Committee members.
I call a question. Okay, it has been called to question. Madam Clerk, remind me on, at this point, we haven't had any debate yet, it's the first time we're dealing with this issue. At this point, do I need to take a motion? Do we need a secondor and have a vote? I know there's some rule around who can call it the question, depending on if they've spoken yet or not. That is true, thank you.
Sorry.
You didn't queue in. You have to queue in in a cycle as well. Well, not when you were, not when you were calling it the question, but Madam Clerk, can you give me some advice here? I don't have the cheat sheet either.
Through the mayor, as counsel has yet to enter into debate or discussion, he can actually put forward the call to question, as he has not made any comments to this point. And the council would need to vote on whether or not to call the question.
Sorry?
Council would need to vote on the calling of the question.
Okay, and there would need to be a secondor, or no?
Yes.
Okay, so Counsel Davey, point of clarification?
Sir, I just want to be clear in this going forward, so you don't actually have to queue in to call the question, you can just yell it from the floor, and then that takes precedence over everything else?
Through the mayor, I was taking into consideration the technical difficulties that we're having tonight in terms of the queuing process, but yes, typically you do need to be recognized by the chair in order to.
Okay, so Counselor, and to be clear, Counsel Yanetski queued in, made his comments, and would have had to queue in again, then, would be my understanding.
But he has not made his comments.
And he has not. Okay, that's my point, thank you.
So we're dealing with the amendment now, that's the only thing that's been called to question. Is there a secondor for calling it the question? No, you can second it, Counsel Fernandez. So it means we'll vote on it without any further discussion? On the amendment, so are you in, who's in favor of calling it the question? Can I see hands, those in favor? Opposed? And it doesn't carry. Was tied, and I don't support calling it the question. So with that, Counselor Singh, you have the floor.
Are we into comments or questions?
We're into comments, we're done questions.
Okay, all right.
And let's comment on everything, both the amendment and the motion.
Yeah, and the motion is, I'm very supportive of this investment into our community of a very strong and thriving tech sector that would not be in place if it were not for Communitech, which all started with a very small investment, also from the city of Kitchener, but a significant funding from the private sector, as well as other orders of government, and we are reaping the rewards of that, those investments that have come and brought in tremendous amount of economic benefit to our community. The question, well, my comment to the motion, if the motion was related to direct staff to engage in discussion with Communitech, because I think there are still a lot of questions, I'm not saying I'm not supportive of what you have in mind, but this, the way the motion is written, it gives more definitive direction until we really do require more information at hand, and I think we have to engage our partners with Communitech with how to facilitate this. So if it were to just direct staff to engage in discussion with Communitech regarding a green eco hub, I would be supportive, but the way it is right now, I can't.
Counsel Davey?
Sorry, Counsel Davey?
Thank you, I considered this, and then when I sat back and thought about it, I considered about how successful Communitech has been, and how professional and knowledgeable the people are that run that organization. To be frank, they have probably forgotten more about startups than many of members of council will ever know. So in considering that, I feel very uncomfortable tinkering with the formula and the knowledge and the expertise that they have in place. So I will, I'm going to be more than happy to support the main motion, but I will not be supporting the amendment.
Counsel Schneider?
Thank you, Mayor Vravnovich. I do support this investment. The comment was made, if we don't invest, does the whole thing collapse? And we can say that about a lot of things that we invest in. I think it comes down to what we value. And to me, I value job creation, I value the innovation that is going on here, and all that has done. I want to thank Counselor Singh for his comments on the amendment, I do believe that directing staff to engage in discussion is probably the best way to go about this. Thank you.
Counsel Marsh?
You know, I fully support the motion to invest in Communitech, I think it's a fantastic investment. I also am prepared to support the amendment, because the word "consider" is just, it implies discussion, and I have full confidence in the leadership at Communitech, that they're not going to just jump into a green eco hub venture without careful consideration and making sure that it makes sense for their organization, so we're just asking them to consider that and encouraging it. And so, yeah, I, because it's not, we're not tying our $300,000 funding to actually creating the eco hub, I will support it.
Counsel Yanetski?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Vravnovich. I will be supporting the original motion, you know, I think we're, as a community, we're at a crossroads right now, and what I mean by that is, I think the rest of the world is starting to catch up, and they're getting a good clue on what we're doing here, and we need to, you know, keep the momentum building, and I think the stuff that, the statistics that Communitech has, you know, the job creation, and the amount of dollars that have been committed to this community is, has been enormous, so, and the spinoff has just been tremendous, and what would we be like here if we didn't have Communitech in our downtown? So I don't even want to think of that thought. And as far as the additional item brought forward by Counsel Fernandez, I have, I like the idea very much, and I support the idea of a green eco hub, but honestly, at this point, in dealing with, in putting in part of Communitech's motion without having Communitech themselves even send some form of support, I just can't support it at this moment.
Counsel Fernandez?
Sorry, can I speak at the end, since it's my motion?
Well, the amendment's your motion, the main motion isn't. Just go ahead.
Okay, so, you know, I thought it was a wonderful opportunity after speaking with Ian and some of the staff as I toured, and I saw all the different spaces that were available, and then having another follow-up conversation with people who are working towards an eco hub. The mission of Communitech is to foster non-for-profits. The, my understanding at the time of my original conversation was the Ascent program funding had expired, and I thought this was a perfect opportunity. Communitech is expanding, green and eco is not, is not just the grass and the trees. We're on the cusp of some amazing changes that people who are working in green industry are seeing and working towards, especially with our federal government's focus on climate change, and what the on climate change and, and what, what these, um, this eco hub could present and the opportunities, not just, uh, in finding solutions to climate change, but also finding, finding jobs and, and bringing new and innovative projects related to our environment and in, related to our, our climate change, to our community. Um, and the way it starts is with, is with some small little NGOs who are working behind the scenes, thing, people like divest water, um, Waterloo, and it, that's how Sustainable, um, Waterloo Region started. We've seen climate action, uh, move that way. We've seen REIT start with a little tiny idea. And that's what we want to foster. That's what we keep talking about with Communitec. So, to add this little piece to the general motion was really just highlighting what the eco and the green, um, hub or the, uh, initiatives could actually be. So, that's why I added it in. I thought it was really a great opportunity to highlight another industry that's just a fledgling, and what a great opportunity for them to work with Communitec.
Counselor Netski?
As I was, uh, providing my comments earlier, um, I will not be supporting this. Uh, this venture of, uh, Communitec's expansion for interior improvements, I mean, it's wonderful that they are expanding. They're a successful company. They're doing very, very well, and their, uh, option in terms of supporting startups is excellence as well. And I commend for all the work that they, they have done. And a lot of businesses here in the Waterloo region, whether in Kitchener, Waterloo, uh, they're doing expansions or further research. They get support from the French, federal and provincial governments, and, and that's, that's wonderful. They don't come to us. Just this, this, this group here in the downtown core seem to be the only ones. Uh, I haven't seen anybody else from, uh, other businesses or expansions that, uh, want to go ahead and, and looking for, for financial support. So, um, this is a particular cause for a particular business, and I think we're heading in the wrong direction. I mean, they're doing well, and I support the growth of their, uh, you know, um, ventures. But I think this is not our jurisdiction to, to do it because it's in the realm of the provincial and federal government for, for their support, and they hand out millions of dollars to, to help them out.
Counselor Marsh?
I just want to clarify that we are not discussing providing support to a for-profit business. We are talking about a not-for-profit organization that supports tech startups. We are not talking about a business. I just want to make sure that's clear.
Thank you for that. Counselor Gazola?
Well, I'm clearing there. I'll, I'll start off with commenting first on the, on the amendment. I won't be supporting it. It's just, you know, we really, we really had two weeks between when we discussed this last time, and to have this dropped on us today, I'm not sure what it's all about, but it sounds like the way American politics works, in order to get something passed, people throw in their, their little favorite things. They want to get included with a bill. So, I won't be supporting that. It may be a fine thing, and after having done some research and getting information, I may well support it, but not at this point. On the original motion, let's, uh, let's be serious. We're talking about a million and a half dollars here. It's not a, it's a 300,000 now, but we're, we're really talking about a million and a half dollars. Now, I'm learning as I go along that it's for, for capital assets. So, but for capital assets, I think they're gonna need the whole million and a half this year. I don't know that we can dribble out 300,000 over a five-year period. But, but that's fine. Uh, it, it just is part of the lack of information that, that we have received. Uh, last week, I did ask for financial statements, and I got a copy of, uh, of a financial statement. It wasn't, it wasn't indicated clearly. There wasn't a consolidated financial statement. So, I don't know what else is out there that, that hasn't been reported upon. But, uh, and it didn't, it, it, it was a formal, very formal, a financial statement, but there was a lot of information that doesn't, uh, uh, jump out at you from those financial statements. Then I also asked for, for budget estimates, and we did receive a one sheet, and it, it really dealt with a $15 million expenditure over a five-year, five-year period. So, it didn't really indicate it was for capital, for what. It was just, it covered, it covered a whole gamut of things, uh, over, over the five-year period. So, the whole, the whole issue is here and is, there's no, the, the good that Communitec, the success they've had, that's, that's not being, that's not what I'm questioning here. I'm questioning here the way we're going about this and the way we're really willy-nilly prepared to spend a million and a half dollars without really taking into account accountability. We have, last week was a, two weeks ago, is a fine example of arts organizations making applications, written documents where they have to set everything out, include financial statements, and also come in person if they want more. And, uh, and they're only asking for a thousand, 2,000, and we saw them a week ago, all, almost all of them got turned down. And here we have a group that are asking for a million and a half, and there's been a fair amount of discussion in the media and whatnot over the past week, couple of weeks. I would have thought that there would have been a representative from this organization here tonight, uh, trying to bid their case, but no, there isn't. I haven't, I've not seen a letter. I've not seen an application form as to what they're intending to do with the money. I'm not questioning the value of, 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 of what they do and what, what can be done, you know? But maybe, maybe the same can be accomplished by giving them $100,000 a year from Kitchener taxpayers and maybe money from, from regional taxpayers. But there was, there was no information like that. I, I was encouraged during the past week to read about the senior governments handing out big amounts to, for example, $15 million to Sandrine and, and money to Open Text. And, and it was clearly stated that don't, until they see results, the senior governments don't hand out the money. First the results, then you get the money. But here we are, upfront, upfront, we have to, we have to keep the ball rolling. But I, I'm, I'm hearing it clearly tonight that, that they're successful, and this is gonna go on regardless of whether, uh, we're in for our money or not. So, we, we, we can't be taking all the credit down the road for, for all of these things that they're gonna accomplish. So, uh, final, final thing, uh, I guess I'll get another opportunity when it comes back, and we're gonna, we're gonna pass it at, uh, capital forecast, uh, meetings we have in the future. But at this point, I can't support where we're going. And I will ask, ask for recorded vote on both of these.
Counselor Galloway-Silak?
Hi, this is a decision that I take very seriously and that I looked at long and hard because, um, Communitec does great work in our community and has really helped to drive our economic development, uh, in our, in this area. And they have done tremendous work and leveraged many dollars. But they also have the ability to raise, uh, funds from other levels of government and from the private sector. But what I came back to every time is that we have to have a piece in the game in order to continue to expect, uh, those other levels of government and businesses, private, uh, revenue to continue to invest. If we're not invested, it's gonna be a harder sell to have the rest invested. I do have to debunk a few things that have been said, though, because I have a sheet of paper here from our committee meeting, uh, that's page 1.4, that shows exactly who's giving what money and how it's being spent. So, it shows municipal funding is $300,000 over the course of five years, but it also shows the construction costs, the furniture costs, the equipment, operating the facility, marketing, promotion. It's all there for the five years, totaling $14 million in revenue and $14 million in expenses. So, that information's been written in front of us the whole time. We're not dealing with 1.5 million today, and I'm not making my, I am not making my decision based-
Counsel on, Counselor Gazola, what's your point of order?
I guess you need something.
What's your point of order, Counselor Gazola?
I, I disagree with what she's saying. She's giving-
Counselor Gazola, you had an opportunity to express your views. She's expressing hers now.
She's saying that I'm full of malarkey. We've got all the information we need. We've got one sheet of-
Counselor Gazola, she's, you expressed your view, she's expressing hers. Go ahead, Counselor Galloway-Silak.
I'm simply raising the fact that we have a piece of paper here that has numbers on it. That's all I was saying. I was not accusing you of anything. I have the inform-
Okay, Counsel, Counselor Gazola, Counselor Galloway-Silak has the floor. Okay, that, Counsel, please, folks, it's 10:35. Let's get on with it. We're gonna have to extend past 11. I can already see that. Go ahead.
I've said nothing wrong here.
No, I, you're right.
Just trying to explain my, my position.
Please, go ahead.
We, I'm not basing my decision tonight on 1.5 million dollars. I am basing my decision on $300,000. And I think that's an important investment that we have to make to show the federal government, the provincial government, and the private sector who's gonna invest in this, in this organization, uh, that we believe in it, that we want to support it moving forward. Having said that, when it comes to the 2017 budget, I'm really looking for, and which it shows in our motion, the progress that's been made through reaching funding levels with the other levels of government in the private sector, because I don't know that moving forward, I'm gonna continue to be able to support the ask of 300,000 over five years. So, I will say that today, and I will meet with whoever wants to talk about this moving towards the 2017 budget. Today, I am only supporting the $300,000 to show the importance of this organization in our community, in job creation, in our economic development, in continuing to move forward, um, with this organization. And I also was able to look up the mission of Communitec, and I think it's important just to note that Communitec helps tech companies start, grow, and succeed. That's our mission, our mantra, our reason for being. And I think that is really relevant to what we're dealing with here today in the addendum, uh, to this motion. And I think it's just important to recognize that. So, I will not repeat myself. This is $300,000. I will deal with the added 1.2 million, uh, when the 2017 year, 2017 budget comes forward.
Okay, any other comments? If not, I'll, I'll make mine. And Mr. Clerk, if I can ask you to put this up on the screen, please. So, just to begin with, um, on the amendment, um, unfortunately, I won't be able to support the, uh, the amendment that's before us. While I, I do think, um, and I'm very supportive of considering, uh, notions, uh, around an, an echo, uh, hub, uh, or a green echo hub, I think, um, it, it really isn't our place to link that, the, the idea of that hub to the grant request for something very different that's before us today. I think we can begin a dialogue to explore. This is a possible area, and staff have indicated that they're willing to do that. But my understanding of anything that we've done and that they've done, or others have done, like the Accelerator Center and others, it, there's been a lot of thought and planning and so on that's gone into it before it's being considered as a direction that we want to go to. And I think we also need to consider the impacts of other partners like Sustainable Waterloo Region, who are also exploring a hub as part of what, uh, what they're doing. So, I'm, I'm pleased that the idea was brought forward, but I think let's have more dialogue on it and see where it goes, uh, and not try to link it to this. And I do want to focus on the grant request that's before us. And I ask council to go back to seven years ago and think of where the city of Kitchener was and to think where our downtown was. In my view, the request that's before us isn't willy-nilly. Communitec is an incredibly successful innovation center located in our city. They're a major component of our economic strategy and a key partner in driving company creation and job growth for the future of this city. I can tell you as mayor, I regularly hear from other cities who, quite frankly, are jealous of what we have in this city and in this region. In 2009, we made a seed investment in the Communitec hub. It was a bit of a gamble at the time, but Communitec went out and translated that money into amazing results and ROI for our city and for our region. Now, they're launching phase two of the hub, and based on the success of the last investment, we're going to invest again. The results aren't just numbers. The Communitec hub has helped put Kitchener and Waterloo on the map as a global startup economy. There are rankings that show the results, but there are also the 12,000 people that visit the Communitec hub each and every year, people coming here to innovate, to grow their business, to expand. Starting with that initial investment of 500,000 from the city of Kitchener, Communitec was able to bring in 41.5 million dollars from the province, 19.5 million from the federal government, and 76 million from the private sector to invest in a digital strategy centered around the Communitec hub in downtown Kitchener. We've got a great head of finance, but let me tell you, even he would struggle to come up with that kind of return on investment. Under this strategy, Communitec has supported 2,296 startup companies over the last seven years, helping to make Waterloo Region home to the second highest density of startups in the world. This has created 11,400 jobs and attracted $773 million in investment to our community. When things have gone bad, badly, Communitec has also been there. When BlackBerry started to shed thousands of jobs, Communitec raised a million dollars to, to launch a major job center to retain the people coming out of BlackBerry in this region. And the result was 1,800 people with new career opportunities, many of them in the startup sector and a local call, economy that barely missed a step. Communitec has also worked closely with their economic development team to attract companies to the city and region. This has included major investments from tech companies like Google and NetSuite, innovation centers from companies like Canadian Tire and TD and GM, and the arrival of smaller companies wanting to set up development offices. An expanded Communitec corporate innovation program will provide even further opportunities to attract more companies to the region. And this is just not an investment into tech jobs and companies. Research shows that for every job in the tech sector, there are at least 4.2 jobs created in other areas, and we, and we're seeing the proof of that in downtown Kitchener. As dozens of startup companies take root in the downtown core, even during LRT construction, we can see the construction of condos, the revitalization of old buildings, and the return of new restaurants and stores. Let's not forget that Communitec is a public-private partnership focused on economic development, and they're a key part of our economic strategy for this city that we approve. There are cities lined up to steal our talent, to steal our companies, and to steal our future. And I for one am not prepared to allow that to happen. So, with that, we'll deal with the amendment first and, and the motion. A recorded vote has been called. So, we'll deal with the amendment first. All those opposed? That motion doesn't carry, and then we'll deal with the main motion. All those opposed? And that motion carries. Well, now move on to unfinished business. New business? Counselor Gazola?
I have a quick question.
Yep.
I have a quick question. If we see a huge grant-
Hold on, can, let's get you turned on. Okay, go ahead.
No, I have, I just, I'm just curious. Uh, I, I read in the paper, I think, 325,000 or did we receive? 650,000? What did we receive? And how, who and when decided where we were gonna spend that? Now, if it's late, I don't need to have that answer tonight. That can, that can be sent. Sent, okay?
Okay.
The other question I want to know with it, do we have to match what they give us? So- So, and if we do, where does that money come from?
Okay, we'll get, we'll get you that information. Any other questions? If not, then we'll move on to the Regional Council update, and we need to request a council representative for the International Airport Master Business Plan, Counselor Ionidis. Oh, get your, go ahead.
I'll nominate Counselor Schneider.
Okay, is there a second or, second of Counselor Marsh? Does anybody else want to be on that committee?
I'll go on the one.
You only have one. Okay, so Counselor Schneider? Oh, actually, no, I gotta take a vote. It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor? Opposed, that's carried. Questions and answers? Bylaws first reading. It's been moved by Counselor Ionidis, seconded by Counselor Marsh. The lead be given the mover and seconder to introduce the bylaws listed on the agenda, and that the same be read a first time and stand refer to the Committee of the Whole. But before I take the vote, there is a late starter. Sorry? Oh, okay, it says. Oh, okay. Okay, so no late starter? All those in favor? There is no late starter. So those in favor? That, that comes under Committee of the Whole. So, all those in favor? Opposed, that's carried. Thank you, folks. It's been moved by Counselor Davy that counsel resolve itself into the Committee of the Whole. All in favor? Opposed, that's carried. If we can turn Counselor Davy on, please.
Can I get a mover for the second reading of the move by Counselor Galloway-Seelock? Those in favor? None opposed, that carries. Dog designation's been moved. Any questions? No, those in favor? None opposed?
Move number five?
Number five? Or number four?
Or is only information-
Do we have to move, so there is no, no, okay. I wasn't sure if that had to be received for information officially, that's fine. So number five's been moved, any questions?
Counselor Etherington has a question.
Counselor Etherington.
It's just a question for information. Perhaps Mr. Chapman could tell me, in relation to tickets and passes enjoyed by counselors, what is the amount-
So this is on item number-
We're four. Okay, that's on number four.
That's okay, yeah, go ahead.
What is the amount we're allowed to use in a year or in a term?
Sorry, Mr. Chapman?
Through the chair, I pride myself on my memory, but I can't recall that detail. I'll have to circulate the policy. It's outlined in council policy, though, the number of golf passes and tickets per year. I'll have to circulate that.
Yeah, I'm asking the question because I notice it varies from 44 for a counselor to 352. I presume those are dollars-
Correct.
For another counselor.
That's right.
That's the only question I had, thank you.
Okay, you have a question from Counselor Gazola on number five.
On number five, Counselor Gazola, or?
Yeah, number five.
Okay, go ahead.
Yeah, this is to do with the SAP program, and I, I didn't get a chance to read your, your memo, but I wanted to know, what was the original cost of the project?
Mr. Chapman, are you ready?
Top of your head is fine.
Through the chair, just over $20 million.
Okay, now, did we, when we were, did we not foresee at that point what's coming up here? Where you want to, you want to keep the, the consultant on longer, is that?
We did, and that formed part of the original approval.
So, so what is it exactly that you're asking for?
We need to increase the PO because we're proposing to shift the mix of onshore and offshore resources. And I can elaborate if committee would like more detail, but what we've learned through the project is that to have a support team that's largely offshore will not serve us well, given the approach we've taken in implementation. We'd be much better served to have resources that are on the project now continue on the support team.
When you're talking onshore and offshore, you're talking about staff here as opposed-
Versus, versus India, yes.
Okay, okay. Just, just one final question. You talk about money will cover this out of the contingency. What, what is left in the contingency?
There's 1.5 million in the contingency, so this would reduce it down to about $1 million.
Oh, okay, okay, thank you.
No more questions? Those in favor? And none opposed? Item number six, the encroachment request. Any questions? Or, sorry, can I get a mover? Moved by Counselor Fernandez, any questions? Counselor Gazola question on the-
Yeah, I'm, I'm just curious as to who owns the, the, the land that these shelters are going on?
That would be us, I believe, but. Sorry, Ms. McDonald?
Yes, through you, Mr. Chair. The land in these particular situations are city-owned land. It's not the road allowance itself, it's actually city land proper.
So do we collect anything for, for being, for letting them use our land like that?
We, we would apply the normal fees that we would apply in any situation.
Okay, yeah, okay. The other question I have, we don't have to build a dome over these locations, huh?
Forget that. No further questions? Not seeing any, those in favor? And there's none opposed on that. Can I get a mover for item number seven? Moved by Counselor Singh. Any questions on item seven? No, no questions. Those in favor? And none opposed?
Move eight up until the council appointments, and then we'll have to deal with those.
Okay, so item number eight's been moved.
But just before we do that, do we need to, do we need to do a motion to extend Mr. May, so Mr. Maythers is being extended to the balance of the year, but I think he's, I think he's hit his six-year mark, so Madam Clerk, do we need to do a motion to-
It's in the recommendation. Second clause.
Yeah, but I think there needs to be a separate motion to consider someone that's hit their maximum.
Oh, okay.
Do you remember, Madam Clerk?
Through you, Mr. Chair. No, I, I don't recall, but I think that the fact that we've put this clause in here extending Mr. Maythers doesn't preclude extending him beyond the, the two terms that he has currently. So it's just, it is just a recommendation to extend him, period. Should be sufficient.
Okay, so that's what I'm moving, Mr. Chair.
Okay, so you're just moving the first two clauses then?
The first two, yes.
Well, let's just take the vote on that then first, and so those in-
I have a question.
Of course, right question. Counselor Fernandez.
Yeah, I just wanted to know, how, how long can we continue to extend this person's appointment to the board? I mean, he's already sat six years. It's going to be extended to 2016. Will that make it seven years then?
Yes.
It will.
And I guess is the question, is there a limit to how long we can extend it? I don't think so. I'm looking, the clerks, not, they're shaking their heads, so I'm thinking there's no limit to how long we can extend it.
Okay, well, maybe that's something we should start considering, because we don't leave room for new people if we keep extending people.
Fair point. Anyone else in the queue then? Okay, we'll take, we'll take the first two clauses first, those in favor? And none opposed? And then for this, for the final clause, I'm looking for nominations. Mr. Mayor, you, who's in the queue? So anyone in the queue for?
Counselor Gazola's in the queue.
Counselor Gazola?
I nominate Counselor Yuneski.
Could ask if he accepts.
Counselor Yuneski, do you accept the nomination? Yes, okay.
Then he's next in the queue?
And Counselor Yuneski next in the queue, go ahead.
Oh, okay.
Counselor Galloway-Seelock?
You clicked too quick. Okay.
I'm nominating Counselor Davy. Do you accept?
I do accept, thank you. Okay, and Counselor Yuneski's next in the queue?
I nominate Counselor John Gazola.
Counselor Gazola, you accept, yes. Is there anyone else in the queue?
Counselor Etherington?
Yeah, I nominate Counselor Singh.
Counselor Singh, do you accept?
I do.
You do? He says he does. Is there anyone else in the queue?
Counselor Singh's in the queue.
Nominate Counselor Ionidis.
Counselor Ionidis, do you accept?
I do.
Does? Is there anyone else in the queue?
That's it.
That's it, okay. So there are voting forms in front of you. You may only pick three members of council, and your options are Counselor Yuneski, myself, Counselor Gazola, Counselor Singh, and Counselor Ionidis. Point of clarification, Counselor Marsh?
Wasn't, sorry, can you remind me, it's late, was, was it the mayor and two counselors up until now? No.
No, it's the mayor and three counselors.
And three counselors.
The mayor and three counselors, so you are, the mayor is on it just as it is.
We can't kick him off.
That's, I was, I was hoping that we couldn't, so I'm just double checking, thanks.
And sorry, the names up for consideration are Counselor Yuneski, myself, Counselor Davy, Counselor Gazola, Counselor Singh, and Counselor Ionidis.
Counselor Marsh, Davy, Ionidis, Gazola. Counselor Schneider, Davy, Singh, Ionidis. Counselor Yuneski, Counselor Yuneski, Gazola.
Need a, need a third one. Third one?
Singh. Counselor Singh, Ionidis. Singh, Davy. Counselor Ionidis, Davy, Singh, Ionidis. Counselor Etherington, Singh, Davy, Ionidis. Counselor Davy, Singh, Davy, Ionidis. Counselor Galloway-Seelock, Singh, Davy, Ionidis. Mayor Vabanovich, Gazola, Davy, Ionidis. Counselor Fernandez, Yuneski, Gazola, Singh.
Okay, so it would appear that myself, Counselor Singh, Counselor Ionidis are the appointed to the center in the square board. And I guess we do vote on that now, right? Correct?
I think.
It seems kind of redundant, but-
The clerk's auditing you.
Oh, pardon me.
So appointed to the center in the square board, Counselor Davy, Counselor Singh, and Counselor Ionidis.
Okay, and Madam Clerk, could we vote on that now as well? No, okay. There is one late starter, that is the sheet in front of you, the Grand River Hospital. Moved by Counselor Galloway-Seelock. Any questions on this? Counselor Gazola? Oh, I can read that out if you like.
Because people haven't seen that?
Sure. So I will read out the, the recommendation. It reads, "That is part of the implementation of the approval of the transfer of a portion of the Grand River Hospital lands to the region which occurred on June 10th, 2013. The mayor and clerk be authorized to execute any documents necessary to grant, transfer, and assign any entitlement to the city to compensation in respect of the expropriation of the said lands to the Grand River Hospital." Okay, any questions or comments on this? Counselor Gazola? Can we cue you in? Or hang, just, just one second, Counselor Gazola. Wait till your mic goes up. Okay, go ahead.
This didn't seem clear to me. The point here for five is that the reason is expropriating land from the hospital, which belongs to the city of Kitchener, and the city is allowing the funds from that to go to the hospital. Is that what it, is that what it's reading?
I'd look to staff to confirm that.
Because it says in respect of the expropriation-
Ms. McDonald? One second here, there you go.
Yes, I may confirm that that is correct.
Okay.
To make it clear, to-
Okay, those in favor? And none opposed? And Madam Clerk, there are no further items?
Moved at the committee, rise and report.
Okay, so it's a move by myself and seconded by Counselor Schneider that the proceedings and recorded peccary interests and conflicts taken in the meeting of the Committee of the Whole held this date are attached here to informing part of these minutes are hereby adopted and confirmed.
All in favor? Opposed, that's carried. Excuse me, it's been moved by Counselor Ionidis, seconded by Counselor Marsh, that the bylaws listed on the agenda for third reading be taken as read a third time, finally passed and numbered serially by the clerk. All in favor? Opposed, that's carried. And it's been moved by Counselor Etherington that we adjourn, all in favor? That's carried. With 10 minutes to spare.